Good evening. Welcome to the Corder Madera Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 12th, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, will you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Metcalfe.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
All right, all present. So at this point in the meeting, we always ask for public comment on something that is not on the agenda that you may have on your mind. You have three minutes to speak. If you would like to stand up in front of the microphone and state your case, you have three minutes to do so. I don't see anyone rising to the opportunity, so...
Actually, I would actually...
Okay, then, please step up and state your name at the microphone. And you have about three minutes. Go over there and use the microphone, please. Are we on? Are we live?
There we go.
There we go.
Greetings. My name is Michael Briggs, and I gave these people an idea over 12 years ago when I worked for Mandrake Books in Sarafell to do this place in Mill Valley because I think it's a better location and I believe the community would support it better over there.
Can you tell me what you're speaking to, sir? I don't know what this place is.
Amy's Kitchen, the restaurant. I gave their initial idea to them, and they loved my idea.
Excuse me. That's something that is on the agenda tonight.
Okay, good.
You can save your comment.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That'll be in the section later. So no one else is going to rise up, then. Thank you. All right. So we'll close the public comment section of this for items that are not on the agenda. So tonight, we have a new hearing and a study session. So the new hearing tonight is on 8 Westward Drive. The description is a public hearing for a design review application for a new 4,670 square foot, two-level, single-family dwelling at 8 Westward Drive, formerly 6 Westward Drive. I'm going to ask the other commissioners if they've been out to look at the project. Have you all been out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So this item is assigned to Mr. Bush, and you have the floor, sir.
So this is a design review application for a new, single-family residence at 6 Westward Drive, and East Corder Madera is indicated here on the vicinity map. First, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the neighborhood context and then get further down into the details of the proposed development. There is an existing, two-level, single-family home at 8 Westward, previously 6 Westward. They applied for a change of address, and that was granted. So it's now 8 Westward, shown here. It is a street that ramps up from Paradise Drive up toward Bauclotha. It's the second house on the street here. Each property is kind of terraced downward toward Paradise, as we'll see in just a moment with some photographs of surrounding homes. This is an application to demolish a majority of the existing structure. It would retain the existing garage and would otherwise be a fully new development. So just looking at some of the site context here, as we work our way up westward, this is 10 Westward, a majority of the homes here range between 2,000 and around 2,500 square feet, inclusive of the garage, as that's how we calculate floor area, including the garage space as well. Moving along, this is 9 Westward, directly across the street. And there's kind of a predominant pattern here of two-level homes with the upper level located in various relation to the lower level. As you go up the street, you'll see some differences here. This is 14 Westward, again, very similar floor plan to 6 Westward. It's under consideration here. This is 2 Westward. This is one of the kind of standout, is a bit different than the rest. This was a new home that was built, I believe, around 2006 that was approved, approved for around 4,200 square feet. I believe it's around 3,800 square feet, again, inclusive of the garage. This is most similar in scale and size to what's being proposed here, which is around the 4,700 square feet. This is the existing property in question. Just kind of starting with the existing footprint and comparing it to the proposed as a way to see kind of how the proposed project would expand onto the site. By kind of switching through the slides here, you can see the existing shown in blue and the proposed shown in red. In the lower-left corner, you see the garage, which is maintaining the same location. Along the whole front setback, the majority of the house is maintaining the same general location. As you can see on the right side here, which is the north side, the proposed structure, the footprint, would be stepped back somewhat, I believe about a foot from the existing. Otherwise, the footprint would be expanding on the lot. Along the southern portion, which is on the left of what you see here, it would be moving closer to the setback lines and in the rear, into the rear yard, which would be the top of this drawing here, to the west. It would be moving significantly toward the back. As you saw in the pictures, the existing upper floor is just over one portion of the lower floor, over the garage. In the proposed design, the upper floor would extend over the entirety of the lower floor. Again, looking at the existing residents, this proposal would increase the height of the structure. I believe the existing height... Let's see here. Well, I failed to mention, the size of the lot is 11,900 square feet. The existing home has a floor ratio of 22.7 percent, and the proposed is 39 percent. The maximum floor area permitted for a lot of this size is 40 percent, so it's just under the maximum permissible floor area. The existing structure height would be increasing by about five feet. The highest point of the peak is actually 20, just over 27 feet. I should also mention that the original proposal looked very similar to what you're seeing here, but some changes were made. One of those changes was that the height was reduced. Originally, the peaks of the roof extended to 30 feet, I believe, and they were lowered a few feet, which we'll show you in just a moment here. This is kind of a rendering, just showing from westward, a little bit downslope from a side view here of what the proposed structure would look like. Also, they've made an effort here to show what the proposed landscaping would look like as well. Really, the only significant landscape feature that remains on the site is the tree that you see there, sort of framing the entryway. Also, as you can see, the architectural style here is somewhat of a departure from the existing structures and the existing neighborhood. A majority of the homes along this street and in the immediate vicinity are really largely original or appear to be so. This would introduce, you know, both in terms of the scale and the architectural style, even the color and materials, it would be quite a bit different from the existing structure and those in the immediate vicinity, obviously. Going through here, we have what's the front elevation or the east elevation, again, as we just saw on the rendering, kind of showing the relationship between this and the neighboring houses on the bottom here. This kind of highlights some of the issues that were raised in the staff report. As you can see, on the right side of the house, because of the downslope and because of the kind of being raised up above the street, the peak height of the roof would be approximately 45 feet above the driveway elevation of the lower home on 2 Westward, which is shown on the right. Although the house does not exceed the maximum height limit and complies with that requirement, there are some questions raised here as to whether the height, the bulk, and the massing are appropriate and harmonious with the site. Furthermore, as we move forward to the other elevations here, so now we're looking at the rear elevation, also calling some attention here to some of the articulation that's been introduced. You have kind of overhanging elements of the upper floor. You have a trellis balcony, sort of some asymmetry with the windows to kind of introduce some visual interest here. You'll see that on the left side there, which would be the downslope toward 2 Westward, there's a retaining wall that would be planted with mountain mahogany, which would kind of help to kind of soften that, soften the elevation. As you look at the south elevation here, you know, some significant effort has been made here to avoid privacy impacts to the upslope neighbor using clear story windows and really using a very minimal number of windows here to avoid issues with the privacy between those two structures. Another change, just to highlight from the original iteration, which you're not seeing here, is that previously, there was a balcony extending to the left here off of the rear elevation. That was removed because it was very close to the level of the upslope neighbor's rear yard, and so there were some privacy concerns there. So the applicant has responded to those concerns by eliminating that feature. Furthermore, as we show here, another image of the south elevation, but with the previous iteration overlaid, so you can see some of the adjustments that were made, kind of in response to discussion with that upslope neighbor at 10 Westward. This portion of the house was actually shifted toward the front of the lot, or here, what would be toward the right of the rendering, to try to create more space along the back of the house and along the back of the yard to create more of a view corridor, to try to help maintain some of the views that are enjoyed from 10 Westward. So this, again, is included in your packet, is included in the plans. A number of the elevations have sort of this overlay to show the evolution of the plans throughout the life of the application. So now, looking at the north elevation, again, this shows the use of the planter box and the plantings kind of overlaid to try to show some breaking up of the massing. Again, there's some concerns for staff, as articulated in the staff report, about the bulk and the mass and the apparent height of the structure due to the elevation above the street and above the lower neighbor and somewhat a lack of articulation in the overall design. You know, you see here, there is a roof element kind of breaking up that lower floor, but ultimately, when viewing this from, you know, as you turn onto the street from Paradise or when you're, you know, you're walking up the street from 2 Westward, it appears to be quite tall, as you can see from the story poles. I don't know how many of you had a chance to go see the story poles in person, but they help to communicate kind of some of the scale issues. So again, going through some of the pictures of the story poles here, they're a little difficult to see, but this is looking at the rear yard. And sort of, this is where you see the difference between, you know, having an upper floor that's only over a portion of the house versus the story poles extending over the entirety of the lower footprint here. And you can also see how the lot slopes up toward the upper neighbor. And again, and I can have these obviously available for reference if you'd like. So again, this shows how the upper floor would extend all the way to the current extent of the northern elevation. So this is looking from 10 Westward. There are some view issues, as raised in the staff report, raised from both the upslope neighbor, the Sherwoods, and raised by staff. There's some concerns here of existing views and the significance of the impact to those views from this addition. This shows how much farther the west elevation would extend out into that rear yard and how it would impact the existing views of the bay and the hills. There is a sort of a deck, one or two feet above grade, that's in the rear yard here that the neighbors do enjoy their view from that location. And so this is to kind of highlight and raise some questions about whether that view is significant, whether it should be protected, and whether this is considered a significant and adverse impact, in which case, designer review finding three may not be able to be made. So this is one of the questions being raised tonight in the staff report. And just to highlight also, you were provided with some letters that came in a little late. One is from 10 Westward, which is the upper neighbor, from the perspective from which we're seeing here. That letter is voicing some objection to this application. You also received a letter from 2 Westward, which is the downslope neighbor, in support of the application. And those were provided since yesterday. So those have been provided to you on the dais, and additional copies have been provided for the public at the back of the room. Just to highlight that there are, you know, several windows and several different views from this structure at 10 Westward again. You can see just barely in the corner here that the story poles do extend out here. Previously, staff made a visit to that residence a couple times, both with the previous iteration of the story poles, and then again after the story poles had been adjusted, after the height had been decreased. And this is really less of a, as far as staff perspective, this is less of an issue. As far as view impacts, as you can see here, it would block a portion of that, of that view from this upper floor window, kind of the living room area, but would not be as significant as the view impacts from the rear of the house. There is just one additional window. This is in a bathroom. This is also looking out kind of over that rear yard and toward that portion of the proposed project, which would extend into the rear yard where it is currently not located. Just lastly, this image kind of highlights some of the issues raised by staff in the staff report regarding the kind of apparent height of the structure, given that it does extend across at 27 feet, but with the height of the property above the street and as just the general terrain characteristics of the neighborhood kind of work to emphasize that height even more, staff has raised some questions about whether this is an appropriate design for this neighborhood and for the site, and whether it blends in as it should with the topography and with the surrounding kind of pattern of development. So obviously have these available for reference as needed. And as just a reminder, as raised in the staff report, you know, this is, the required findings are what need to be, you know, the planning commission needs to be able to say these things in the affirmative to approve a project, and staff has raised questions about whether all these findings can be made and has not provided a resolution or recommendation for approval or for denial, but rather is asking for feedback on whether the commission believes these findings can be made. And if so, staff can return with a resolution for approval. If not, we ask that the commission provides feedback to the applicant as to how they can improve the application, and we can go from there. So happy to answer any questions you may have. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. So the first thing that we'll do up here is take questions from other commissioners for staff, and then we'll give the applicant 15 minutes to make a presentation. And then we'll go into public comment if we don't have any questions for the applicant at that time. And after public comment, we'll debate the application. So that said, Phyllis, do you have any questions for staff?
No questions at this time.
Dr. Bundy.
Doug, was there a separate excavation permit issued for this project?
This is the only, well, we have an application for a design review for the structure. We also received an application to repair a retaining wall. It's been a kind of an outstanding issue. Walls around the rear of the yard were removed without permits, and they were required to be repaired and replaced, so we have an application for that. But no other excavation or any permits of that sort of been filed.
All right. Mr. Lee.
No questions.
All right.
Doug, can you just explain the photos that you took from 10 Westward? Were you standing on the deck, not this one, the one before this, this one? Can you just explain sort of how you were oriented?
Yeah, so I held this at about five-foot, five-foot height.
Okay.
I did that for all the photos. This was taken while standing on the deck in the backyard. The next photo was taken standing directly next to the fence. It's kind of a lower fence because the yard kind of slopes downward. So this is about five-foot height. Looking there.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So if that's about five-foot height, Doug, and you're one foot off the ground, do you have any photos standing on the ground in the backyard, in the middle of the yard, in front of that deck, say, looking out along that path?
So these are the photos that I have in the presentation. Obviously, no photos, none of these photos were included in the packet. There are more photos available, but not, there aren't any more photos available at this time.
Okay.
For reference.
So to further clarify, Dr. Bundy's question is that the site, for all intensive purposes, it looks like a construction site. It's been deteriorating, and a lot of work is undertaken. So was any of that permitted in any way, or is there any type of manner in which they could proceed to where they are right now?
I can just say that when the application was received, you know, the house was in this condition. You know, if you look at older photos, obviously, there was vegetation there, you know, a year or two ago, but I don't know if any of the work that's been done as far as clearing of vegetation or preparing the site or however you'd like to refer to it, required a permit. So there were no permits prior to this on record for preparing the site for development. We did bring to the attention of the applicant the fact that removal of that retaining wall needed to be addressed right away and that that was not, you know, needed to be replaced and put back in, rebuilt, and that's, they have applied for that. That is currently under review by the department, and we are expediting that so that it can be in place before the rainy season, built and replaced before rains start again.
With that said, in the civil plan that's on page one, it shows essentially a five-foot and less retaining wall at the backyard. Is that what the application reflects and so forth?
So I don't have the application here to directly compare, but the, definitely on the site plan that's in the plan set included there, it shows the top of wall and base of wall. And, you know, they've applied to replace the retaining wall. I don't believe it exceeds those dimensions.
Okay. And it's not been reviewed enough to determine if the height is adequate at this time? Is that fair to say?
It's currently under review.
Right. Okay. All right. Anything else, commissioners? All right. So who do we have that's going to make a presentation for the applicant?
You are?
Test, test. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Skelton. I'm pleased to be appearing this evening on behalf of the owners of 8 Westward Drive. I'm also joined by project architect, who can answer any technical questions that I might not be able to address. So, full disclosure, I want to tell everyone, I did not collaborate with Doug in advance of his presentation, although I was pleased to see that they do actually line up quite well. So I apologize if it appears redundant, but it was done completely independent of Doug. I want to give you quickly a brief project background. We've been through about four design iterations. I'm sure the owners feel like it's probably been a little bit more than that. There's been two substantive alternative design strategies that have been reviewed, and then various internal design revisions. Doug touched on some of those, and I'll highlight them as we go through. There's been an extensive neighbor outreach. I think that it's shown in your packet, the robust support letters from adjacent neighbors, and we did receive the 10 Westward neighbors' opposition to the project at this evening's hearing. We've also worked closely with staff in trying to address some of the perceived concerns. These were raised in the incompleteness letters and responded to, both in terms of substance and redesign. This is a no variance application that fully complies with the development standards. Given that the architect and owners did wrestle with view, privacy, enassing, and those conflicts that inherently exist in just about any project application, and so we believe that we've reached a sweet spot, and we're asking the commission to approve the project as designed. So this slide, clearly Doug and I use the same resource, give a little bit of neighborhood context here. Again, 6 Westward, we're actually 8, and as we look along the frontage, one of the items that pops out is that a majority of the properties, they develop along the sideyard to sideyard, and most of them actually are set a little bit closer to the street. 8 Westward in particular is set back, you'll see it in the civil plan, it's about 10 feet beyond the exterior setback. We talk about the way that these properties are oriented. Almost all of the properties in the immediate vicinity are oriented towards the street. And I say oriented, it's not only how you take access, but it's also where are your most significant windows? How does it read to the street? There are a handful of them that do capture and try to take advantage of some of the views as you rise up Westward Drive, and they've been highlighted, namely on the right side, for reference. Site strategy. So I said, we looked at a couple different site strategies when looking at this project. At the end of the day, we elected to try to tier off of the existing footprint of the house, but I want to explain some of the thought process that went into this project. So we did think about doing a full demo rebuild and shifting it closer to one of the sideyards, having a larger sideyard for entertaining and outdoor space. Taking the upslope side provides better views, and you could actually orient towards the bay and the distant hills. The other that we looked at was stretching a little bit more, sideyard to sideyard, but that pulling it closer to the street frontage. This, as I'll touch on in a minute, didn't work, namely because you end up with significant grading work. There's already an existing garage slope, seems to be pretty well maximized. As you pull the house closer, you have to get access to the house, so you sit the house lower to get into that garage. The site work that would be a byproduct of that just didn't seem practical or worthwhile for the neighborhood impacts. So as, again, as Doug pointed out, this is the existing footprint. Here's the proposed footprint, and you'll see that they tried to tier relatively similarly off the same. In particular, the frontage of the property remains identical. We've actually pulled in the property on the north slightly, and we've pulled it back on the west slightly. Again, we did look at shifting the property closer to the street, but this did present this problem of how do you actually access the property? Again, that the construction impacts caused by really regrading the entirety of the property seemed overwhelming. We didn't even bother getting a civil to do the calcs because rough estimate it was going to far exceed 1,000 cubic yards of cut. Byproduct of that would be corresponding increase in retaining wall heights, which we talked about. Currently, the retaining wall that rots around the rear of the property is scheduled for three and a half feet. When you start to talk about regrading, whether or not it's from pulling the house forward or trying to sink the house lower into the existing footprint, there is a corresponding cut and fill, no pun intended, and those retaining walls to support the level rear yard naturally increase, likely beyond the six-foot max that the code tries to prescribe. So we did shift the massing in response to some of the concerns that we heard. Again, Doug identified the pre-existing outline. The massing was shifted away from the west, closer to the front by, well, not even closer to the front, it was truncated on the west by four feet. It was shifted in part closer to the front of the house. We also eliminated the rear master bedroom balcony as a recognition to the privacy concern raised by the upslope neighbor. And we've reduced the overall height of the structure by two and a half feet. Again, these were pretty significant modifications that were done in response to perceived concerns about view and privacy. about view and privacy from the upslope neighbor. Lastly, this elevation, I think our architect cringes a little bit at it because there isn't a lot of definition and articulation, but that was, again, done out of deference to the neighbor, minimal windows located with high sills, and trying to minimize the impact there. Balken mass, as it's read from the street. So, this is the street view. The, there was talk about the height of the house, that it's nearly 40-plus feet from the neighbor's driveway. That's not how the code defines height. You don't go to an extreme position on somebody else's lot to try and define what the height is. Again, we are fully code compliant with the heights, and in fact, reduced below. The, there's a perception that this is quite an excessive, excessively tall building. The plate heights actually are relatively modest. On the, on the ground floor, it is a 10-foot plate height where all the entertaining space takes place, but on the upper floor, excuse me, it's about eight foot two, which by today's, I think, contemporary standards is, is pretty conservative. The massing and articulation. I want to point out that there's step backs, both on the northern elevation and on this eastern elevation. There are a variety of architectural techniques that were introduced. And there's, there's also step backs within the eastern facade, and I want to show you that in the, in the plate, in the floor plan here. You can see that there are a variety of planes that exist on this street elevation. This was done quite intentionally to make it a very attractive and interesting street frontage. Also, on the southern elevation, there is also a natural step back as you get closer to the garage on the east. Staff identified that there's not a lot of ma, not a lot of articulation on the northern elevation. I think we simply just have a difference of opinion there. If you look at this elevation, I think there are a number of features that do respond to articulation. One is breaking up the massing through the planter retaining wall and, and the screening that will be provided, pretty much reducing that first floor elevation as it's perceived from the downslope neighbor who supports the project. The second floor step back, I believe a foot and a half, there's introduction of the sort of shed roof to break up the two, two upper story and lower story features. And then, this portion, pardon me, is actually in the background. That's on the southern elevation. So, as you look at this, it's a little deceptive in two dimensions. That's a three-dimensional space off in the distance. Floor area. I expect that the neighbor will, will raise it when, the neighbor at 10 Westward would raise it when they talked during public open time, but I wanted to address it since it was also raised in the public comment letter. Certainly, we can play with numbers, and, and I can try to demonstrate how or why this is or is not compatible with the neighborhood. But one of the things that I did was, I looked at, what is the trend? This is a, this is a, I believe, a neighborhood in transition. All of the houses were built in and around 1964. So, what I did was, I looked at, what does the past 20 years look like? We're not necessarily comparing apples to apples when we talk about the original development of this subdivision. So, I captured the past 20 years. The Verona properties, I understand, are outliers. They're not directly adjacent, and these properties are all within 1,000 linear feet of the subject property. You'll see that the, the average is actually larger than the 2,500 that's suggested. It's closer to 3,200, not including garage. But another difference here is that a lot of these properties benefit from significant outdoor spaces that are actually part of the built structure. When you look at the deck area for these properties, they're actually quite, quite significant. And so, when you talk about balkan mass as a metric for, for, or I'm sorry, floor area as a metric for balkan mass, those deck spaces and the garage spaces and the actual total building area square footage all add up to a common number. I don't believe that it is prudent on, on a broad scale to prescribe a set number, and so that's why I say, we're not designing to the mean or the average, and there's nothing in the code that says that you have to. I understand that this is one of the taller projects in the surrounding neighborhood. I want to talk about views, because this is more of a policy issue, and forgive me, I usually don't put this much script on any PowerPoint presentation, but there are a number of items that I want to highlight here. First of all, town doesn't have an explicit view ordinance. Other jurisdictions and the surrounding communities do, Sausalito, Tiburon, and others. I think that's a conscientious legislative decision by the council, and it's something that they may take up in the future, but at this time, there is no view ordinance. Views are protected under the tree ordinance, separate and distinct. There is no tree claim here, so there is no view claim. The designer view findings do touch on views, privacy, and light. And so, there is tension there with an overall project's balkan mass, and how do you reconcile those issues? Views are not defined within the municipal code. There needs to be vertical consistency within the town's planning documents. Right now, it is defined in the general plan. It hasn't yet trickled down to the municipal code, which is what you're really tasked with applying. There was comments in the staff report about 1830030, in that a bayfront or water-oriented residential areas, preservation of views, view corridors to the bay should be attained wherever possible. While I would suggest that this project and the uphill neighbor at 10 Westward are not bayfront or water-oriented views. I provided the slide earlier about how the properties all orient in the community, in the neighborhood. Certain ones do certainly orient towards the bay. This is not one of them. Neither is the, the uphill neighbor at 10 Westward. I looked at the zoning, the overlays that might suggest otherwise. This is not zoned for the bayland natural habitat overlay, and it's not zoned as a scenic overlay district. And then, more importantly, and I think fundamentally, there is no right to a view over an adjacent property in California. That is, that is, the California Supreme Court has handed that down. If there is to be protected views, it has to be part of the municipal code explicit, and it is not here in Corte Madera yet. Views, as I said, it is defined in the, in the general plan, and so I do want to touch on this really briefly. It's defined as a scene from a residence and/or its active use area, such as a yard or deck, and includes both, both upslope and downslope scenes. A residence is defined as a person's home, its structure. Here, we've seen in the staff report, in the presentation, photos that were taken from the residence. Those views, I would suggest, are minimally or not at all adversely impacted. Now, I do see in the general plan that probably at the time of writing, the, the precision with the language may have been overlooked because you're using residence and/or active use area. Active use area is not defined under the code. I would suggest that this space, based on the photos that staff presented, is a transitory area. You are walking to or from this, the house to the elevated pergola deck feature, and that that area is for seating and enjoying the outdoor sun and air.
Interrupt you here for a moment.
Yes.
We've gone through 15 minutes. I want to know how much more time you guys want to take.
Probably about 45 seconds.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just want to touch on some of the views. When we fir, when our team first reached out to the upslope neighbor, we said, you know, what is it that, that you're most concerned about? Views. This was one of the views that was sought to be preserved, which is also what drove the overall site strategy in not pulling the house too far forward. This is a view out of a bathroom window. I would suggest that probably under today's commission and/or council, that this, this window would be frosted or screened or have some other privacy feature on it. I, I, I don't believe that this is a active outdoor, an active space of the residence. It's a transitory space. This, again, is, I don't really have context for this other than this is approximately a five-and-a-half-foot fence. It's a solidwood fence. It's to pervert, provide privacy to the neighbor in their use and enjoyment of that area. This is a view up towards 10 Westward from the sideyard at Eight Westward. Again, the vegetation in this area has been allowed to, to grow quite significantly. This is a view when I was inspecting and, and working on story poles, again, showing the significant vegetation that provides screening, privacy, and fundamentally obstructs a lot of views from the residence of 10 Westward. This is what appears to be that active outdoor area. There are two seating areas. The activeness of that space is designed for seating and, and enjoying that, that sun and light, not necessarily standing at the edge of a five-and-a-half-foot fence peering over towards the bay. So, there's, pardon me, 30 more seconds if you'll indulge. After receiving the staff report late last week, early, early this week, we, we heard additional concerns, and namely, and the most objective ones that we could sort of hang, hang on to, were the massing on the northern elevation. We asked the architect, we said, listen, staff doesn't think that you, that, that we've done enough job to articulate and reduce the mass on the northern elevation? What can we do more? And staff couldn't give us a defined answer, but what we are proposing for your consideration as a condition of approval is stepping the second story back an additional two-and-a-half feet, so there is four feet of step back between the first and second floor, which would be, I think, a pretty significant distinction and differential between that first and second floor. It would exaggerate that sort of shed roof that projects towards the north. As a byproduct of that, we're going to be reducing square footage in that area. Went from two bathrooms to one bathroom. That becomes a Jack and Jill in the middle there. This is what the, the revised elevation, excuse me, eastern elevation would look like with that step back. And then, secondarily, and pardon me, the architect's probably cringing in the back here, we have a seven and 12 roof, roof slope. Beautiful. It's, it's quite articulate. It defines a really nice street presence. We would suggest dropping it to a five and 12, which is less than ideal. It sort of pulls a hat down on a head, so to speak, but by changing that roof slope, you, we will draw, and, and doing that on both the northern mass and the southern mass, we would effectively drop the overall height of the structure by approximately two feet. And so, in conclusion, we've reached out to neighbors, we've worked with staff, we think that we've designed within the, the bounds of, of the code. We've explored a variety of alternative site strategies and designs, and we've elected to try to tear off of the existing footprint. We requested the commission approve the project either as designed or conditionally designed, as I just suggested. And lastly, and frankly, to Doug's sort of closing point, if the commission cannot make the findings, which we believe can be made, then we would ask for very specific guidance on grading the site down, and whether that's the, the solution for lowering overall balkan mass to reduce the height, shifting the house closer to the street, two-story feasibility on, on both the north and the south, and then lock coverage and/or floor area. So, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or bring up the architect as well.
All right. Well, thank you. Clearly, well-thought-out approach, and very complete. So, commissioners, this gentleman is here for questions. So, Mr. Lee, do you have any questions for this gentleman at the time?
I had a question for the architect.
Certainly.
Okay.
Jim, do you mind joining us?
Good evening. I'm Jim Trimm, in the architect.
Hi, Jim. Charles. One of the first questions I have is, there has been concerns by staff and others that the bulk and height appearance of the building might be too much. So, one of the things I've noticed in the elevation is the material and the bad, board and batten type vertical orientation really accentuates that in the perceived and literal sense. So, have you explored other options that, that try to represent the building as a horizontal kind of design instead of enhancing the verticality? I think you also do it in some of the finessuration.
We, the approach on this project was to do kind of a more modern farmhouse look to it, and so that was the, the kind of architectural orientation we were going for. And so, that's, that's what, what the client wanted, and that's what we pursued. So, we did not specifically look at the difference. I'm not sure how in this particular, with this massing and this particular style, if that would actually look very good.
Okay. That's your question?
Uh, that's all I got.
Okay. Jennifer?
Yeah, hi. Thank you, guys. This was a very thorough presentation. Sorry. I was wondering, and I appreciate the alternative that you've put out there and for us to consider. One of the planes, I think, that's also been problematic is, you know, from the street view, I guess, is it the west, the eastern elevation? The...
I'll get there.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. The east elevation. So, I believe it's one of the second bedrooms that's over here on the, the right-hand side. And sort of that plane, which I think also speaks to what Commissioner Lee brought up, you know, if you were able to either change some of the materials on the second floor, or better break up, you know, those, that plane specifically, I think it would also give the impact that it wasn't quite as, as tall and as bulky as it is. I don't know if that's something you considered as you looked at stepping back from the, the sideyard. Had you looked at stepping back the second story from that?
We, we actually, we did, and I'm sorry, I wish I had a pointer on this. Actually, so, one of the things that we were conscientious of is trying to avoid pulling this mass. So, to answer your question, we did look at taking this, stepping it back so that it was more in line with this entry door plane. You'll see that we actually kept it forward, which is consistent with the, with the existing footprint. But when we stepped it back, we were worried about creating too much linear mass at the entry, as well as if we shifted it, and literally as a feature, took this mass, shifted it, say, four to five feet, and then extending it out here, we were worried that a sightline from the rear, from the neighbor's rear pergola deck feature would further cut off that angle. So, we would be exacerbating a, a perceived concern. So, we, we didn't want to push that feature back too much further.
Okay.
If that, does that make sense?
Yes.
But we did, we did look at it, and the two, two issues were too much linear massing at the, at the frontage, and then also concerns about projecting into the rear.
Did you consider just making that bedroom smaller?
As a, as a reduction?
Yes.
No. Well, I mean, yes, we did. And the point of compromise is, we, we made them smaller by, by, on the horizontal, on the north-south axis as opposed to east-west.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
I, I was also concerned about that northwest corner of the property, but I think with the additional step back that you're proposing, I think that breaks it up nice. I looked at the, the massing on, proposed on this project, and then also, just going up the hill and looking at some of the other houses, and a lot of them do seem to have significant massing, and, and actually, I think you've created some articulation in this and, and made that nicer. The, I, I think the five to 12 roof slope will help as far as bringing that down. That was my other concern. The chimney is still going to be quite tall, and given that, I'm sure this is a gas fireplace, and I don't think it has to be that tall for, you know, wood fireplace code. Can that be brought down?
You are correct. I don't believe that a gas fireplace would, would require the same projection above a finished roof peak. I don't know the technical answer to that. I'm going to ask Jim. I don't know if it's been explored, whether it's wood or gas, and if that was a significant obstacle, then I think we would defer to the commission in accommodating a gas fireplace.
I think Bay Area air quality won't allow wood fireplaces anymore.
I think there are some hybrids that, that they, that they do allow, but I don't know the technical specifications about whether or not. But I, I hear what you're saying, and, yeah.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
The, the other question was, it looks like you've gone from a perimeter to a slab foundation. Was that to lower the overall height of the project?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Phyllis, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes.
We'll come back and discuss it later, but...
Right.
Just questions for these two.
Well, one of the questions has to, about the same question that Charles asked. Sometimes perception is bigger than reality, and this, the mass of this just comes at you. And... And, you know, even with the same square footage, I'm asking of ways that it doesn't come forward so much, and one of the things would be to use the horizontal siding rather than vertical siding. And also, I noticed while I was on the street, there's several houses that do have second stories, but they don't, they're on a portion of the first story, and I'm just talking about setbacks. I'm talking about, well, similar to what the house is that's there now that you're demolishing. The second story is just on a portion and not straight across. I think that, too, would reduce mass, and I'm asking what attempts, other than what you have mentioned, can, I guess this for our, the architect, can you conceive to reduce the look of mass, you know, what we're seeing from the street?
Well, I think we looked at, the concerns from staff were mostly on the two side elevations, and so that's where we put most of our efforts. So, by, we've looked at reducing the mass on the upper, on the upper floor, again, as this alternative, again, pushing it more to give more articulation there. It does, by making the upper bedroom smaller, you do bring the roof height down, and it does, it will reduce the mass, and we're talking about if we reduce the roof slope, it's also a pretty significant reduction on that, on that corner and along that whole north elevation, which seemed to be, from staff's feedback, one of the major concerns, and that's is what we focus a lot of our energy on.
Well, in reading this and in my discussions with staff, they were concerned about mass and bulk, period. Not, you know, yes, you've brought it in on the sides, but it is the mass and bulk of the design itself that I think is creating a problem. And I'm asking you, not what you have done, what you think can possibly be done that would make this less in-your-face, let's say. I know that's a great architectural term, but you've, I think you understand what I'm trying to say.
One of the, one of the...
I was asking the architect, he's the designer, if you don't mind.
So the concept of the house, we're going back to, initially, the concept of the house was to have these two, these two kind of bedroom gables with the intermediate gable connecting them. And that was boiled down to the client's desire to have kind of two separate bedroom wings. He's got kids, they're going to grow up, they're going to become teenagers, and he wants to have this sort of separation. And so that was one of the concepts we started from the beginning. Now, if you're asking to reduce the bulk without, you know, direction, there's a lot of things we could do. You know, I'm not, I'd like to defer to Chris to kind of maybe give us a...
Yeah, so we, I hear that you say you don't want to know what we've done, but conceptually, what can...
I appreciate what you've done, I'd like to know what more you can do.
Well, we did look at, and I apologize, maybe there was a miscommunication between our efforts with staff and maybe conversations that you've had, but when we talked about concerns from staff, mass and bulk was perceived from the northern elevation, and that there was a possibility of a view question on the southern elevation. And so when we looked at the mass and bulk, we really focused our attention on that northern feature, which is why, in short order, we came back with the alternative northern elevation. The perceived bulk and mass from the street frontage is challenging because it has such a, I think aesthetically pleasing, street presence, the way that the facade actually is broken up into four different planes and the two second-story features. So we did look, you know, we've looked at distributing across, across the rear property more, but then we run into a lot coverage, and also having a symmetrical front was a visual aesthetic that is, like I said, quite appealing.
Before I ask the next question, I just want to clarify something, and you're not the first one who has done this. Having no variance needed for an app shouldn't be an assumption that the project is going to be approved. Those are just the stated limitations and the maximums. There's, it doesn't mean permission is granted because you're under a certain height or lot coverage, et cetera.
I understand, it doesn't mean you have a right to it.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that was clear, because, I mean, every other person who comes before us has that assumption. I'm looking at page four of the staff report, and I'm just going to read this one sentence because you were saying you didn't understand, you didn't feel that the staff was concerned about the total of the mass, and they were just... And it's the first sentence, "Under design review discussion, this application represents a significant change from the existing structure in terms of architectural style, height, bulk, and massing in overall size." It doesn't say on the left, on the right, or on the north or the south. It is looking at the building itself. It is a very attractive design. I'm not criticizing the design, I am questioning whether or not this design works in this location, fitting into the community, and what can be done to make alterations in the design to make it better fit into the neighborhood, the community.
So, we've been working with staff for, coming up on, I think, five or six months now, and there's been a lot of conversations, you know, between the application in April and tonight, and I think really following June story polls, where we did a preliminary story poll construction for neighbors and for staff to come out, and then we responded to feedback from them in doing significant redesigns, lowering the house almost three feet, adding articulation, shifting east and west. And so, that's when the, I think substantive dialogue really started. We had a meeting with staff at the end of July where the view issue was raised as a concern, and we've explored it since then. And then, as late as last week, before, I think, the staff report was written, massing at the northern elevation was specifically called out and identified. And I asked point blank, I said, "Is it the northern elevation? Is it the southern elevation? Is it overall?" And really, the northern elevation, what was called out. And so we've done our best in less than a week to respond to that specific guidance. But I understand that, I mean, we've worked closely with staff on the project, staff is not the decision-maker, you guys are, and, you know, staff even said, "Do you want more time to explore this?" But no one had a crystal ball, and so we said, you know, "We need feedback. We've put a lot into this, and we've, we have not made any assumptions along the way." And that's why I laid out all of the different alternatives that we have explored and the changes that have been made, in hoping to demonstrate why this project merits approval. And as I closed, asked if you do not believe it merits approval, then specifically what is it about it that doesn't, and how that can be changed.
Well, I think we'll be discussing it, but before I give up my time, I just want to say you gave an outstanding presentation, and I appreciate all the clarifications in it, though I still have questions about the design.
And Doug and I did not share presentations beforehand, so, even though they looked pretty similar.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be as brief as I can so we can get to some public input on this. It's clearly not your first presentation, it is well-done, it's got its own reasoning. I will say that I don't agree with your conclusions necessarily, and that's our job up here, is to come to a conclusion that is our conclusion, and it may not be your conclusion. So, that said, when you presented your square footage chart, you're pulling a number of properties outside of the immediate area. And I did my own set of reviews of neighboring lots and so forth, and so your average and your lot size comes down considerably when using neighboring lots up and down westward and balcutha and so forth. So, you know, the, the general plan specifically says and encourages the upgrading of homes such as these, and I don't deny you the architectural freedom to do that. I think that, here we are, the simple question is, why this amount of square footage for this house? Is there some factor, is it, is it square footage price, is it, just offhand, what is it that you want that much square footage out of this?
It's to really accommodate the family. So, multiple children and having, having them, everyone on the same level. And, you know, that's where there's a little bit of, well, not a little bit, there's absolute tension. Staff in the, in the report, and I quote it at the bottom, "Staff does not believe the overall floor area of this project is an issue, but rather how it's distributed." And, you know, another question that you asked is, how could it be reduced? I think you guys, well, I know you guys have generally been on the, on the commission for long enough to understand, you can always nip and tuck, and we can pull in a wall, and you can do these little things, and certainly if that's the direction that you give, then we will gladly accommodate. But if it's, if it's, I tell clients, "Don't design to a number," all right? Because it's arbitrary, and someone might feel, you can design a small house that has a huge presence. Conversely, you can design a large house that has a minimal presence. And, and, you know, I hear what Commissioner Lee said, you know, using the vertical siding exacerbates it. It's like, you know, wearing stripes. And so that's something that I think we would take quite, quite seriously, say, "Let's do a horizontal siding." Or, or do a dynamic mix, and pardon me for designing from the podium here, I'm really just killing Jim, he's going to hate me afterwards and the owners.
We're probably going to have to get back to another discussion with you after we hear public comment and we discuss it ourselves, so, and we're going to have to decide where we go with you in hand or not.
And just to really quickly explain, and I know I rationalized it earlier, but this is all from the assessor records, it's, I know it says outside the immediate area, you know, use the same Moran map to draw the 1,000 feet, that was the maximum area that you can do, and because I was trying to capture the largest pool of remodels or rebuilds within the recent past, because this, this is a, I mean, I don't mean it in the technical term, but it is a historical neighborhood for Corder Madera. I mean, 1964 is when all of these houses were built out, and I think that you will be receiving more and more applications for this area in particular.
No doubt. Since you brought it up again, so the Verona Place lots are all much larger. Up and down westward, the square footage of the homes is number two, which is remodeled at 3,700 square foot, you know, is one of the largest homes in the area. So, and everything else is 21, 25, 118 westward. So, you know, if you add 1,000 square feet to those homes, that's a significant leap, it's a one-third leap. You get to 3,600 square feet, which is what number two westward is. So, you know, there is a reasonable size in a neighborhood to increase a project, so that'll be a part of our discussion up here, I don't want to take any more time. And only finally, as a matter of respecting the town rules and regulations, what initiated your efforts on that site to do so much demo and go forward with that, without any sort of clearance or permits enabled with the town?
I believe it was ignorance, and I, you know, throw myself at the mercy of the commission and the town on behalf of the owners with, with removal of the old retaining wall, not knowing that a demo permit was necessary, and probably not understanding how long a process takes in Moran or Corder Madera, and thinking perhaps irrationally that they would have been breaking ground this summer.
Well, that's, it's not our purview to actually, it is their purview to put the red tag on you for that and so forth. You are, however, are smart enough to know when it's appropriate and when it's not.
Absolutely.
So, and that's just the way it is, but it is sad now that the house is a blight on the neighborhood, and it's, this is, here we are with a project before us, and we don't know what it's going to end up looking like. So, before we go to public comment, any other questions from you guys?
Can I ask one really quick question?
On the southern side, where, and so I was up there today, and obviously there's some vegetation, you may even have a photo of it. Can you just explain, because I know you're moving the house eight feet closer to the side yard, yeah, right here?
Yep.
So, what is the plan right now that you guys have to deal with this, obviously very significant grade change? It's a three-foot retaining wall, and then all that vegetation's coming out and being replanted?
No, I believe the ivy and that vegetation is to remain, it's not actually on our property. That's on the up slope neighbor's property.
Can you draw, like, with the pointer, just, do you know approximately where the property line is relative to?
That will not reflect on there.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't.
You just see that the plastic's there.
If you've been out there, the story, the story polls are, I mean, they show where the improvements are, and then...
Six feet from the property line.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, understood. So the property line's somewhere on that down slope, somewhere in there.
Oh, yes, the property line is somewhere on the, on the sloping part.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to retract my former statement. Is this a facile meal of the siding that's going on the house? So this is like a miniaturized board and batten here that you've got on this thing? Right, okay. All right. So, that's the color, and it's plywood or is it actual?
It'll be actual wood.
It is, this is architectural wood. So are you using S1S2E or something spruce for the siding? Are you using Ruffson siding?
We haven't gotten that far.
Okay, all right. And the roof appears then to be a semi-gloss material here, is that what that represents?
That's the closest chip I could get.
Okay.
Peter, I'm going to ask you the question, since you're talking about the siding, which I noticed also. Is that a manufactured siding?
No.
That they're showing it?
No, it's not. It's just a true board and batten that you got here, right? Yeah, yeah, okay. And, you know, when you represent a light fixture on a sheet, it is the light fixture that is to be done. So, you know, whatever goes into this application or ever gets accepted is the light fixture, and in this case, we want fully shielded light source bulbs, and this one does that, but you have to follow that rule, that what's on this submittal is what gets approved ultimately. And Jennifer brought up the retaining walls, and I don't know if you've had a structural engineer, or you've had a soils report done on the property yet?
We have soils report and a structural engineer.
So, and you feel that that downhill wood planter to the north is actually structurally viable?
Well, I think the idea is to do concrete piers and then use the wood siding so that, you know, it's not...
Okay, all right.
It's a little more of a softer...
Got it, all right. All right, thank you, guys. All of you have been very patient, we've got a lot to do tonight, so we're going to open this up to public comment for this project, so please step up to the microphone, state your name. So, please, go ahead, yes.
My name is Tom Sherwood, I'm one of the owners of the property at 10 Westward, the house to the south of this house. Apparently, I'm the one with the perceived concerns, and I can tell you, they are not perceived, they are very real concerns. The fence that was alluded to earlier, the short fence, which is not five feet, it's a four-foot fence, is not on the property line. It's there for safety reasons because of the steep down slope. If we wanted to, we could remove the fence and move it lower down the side. And so, the issue of, you know, whether sitting in the chairs, you can see the bayview or whatever, is just frankly fairly silly. I'm really not sure... I, I'm, I'm really not sure where to begin on this presentation. I was fairly prepared before the presentation, which used words like perceived and took staff statements out of context and used references, I'll buy a new one, references to the properties on Verona as an indication that this was a, a neighborhood in transition, obviously not knowing the history behind the development at Verona. The staff report, the statement that's taken out of context, is from a paragraph that starts, which you quoted, ma'am. "Staff finds that the project raises several questions regarding whether all the design review findings can be made. Staff has concerns about the overall bulk and massing of the structure." In my letter, on the second page, there's a table that I put together off of public information of the sizes and the FERs of the houses in the neighborhood. It shows the existing and proposed square footage of the property at what used to be six westward, and I guess is now eight because it's getting closer to my house, to within six feet. But, as you can see, this, this house simply is, is just out of scale with the neighborhood. And if this is truly a neighborhood in transition, there's a reason it's a neighborhood in transition, and it's this application. This application is going to set a precedence for the entire community at large, not just the immediate neighborhood. If you can build a property that is almost twice as large as anything else in the neighborhood, the town is going to change. And I guarantee you that when it starts, these start popping up, you're going to have the neighborhood revolting your hands from the, from the citizens. Just out of curiosity, go out on a limb, how many people in the audience think this house is too big for this site? Raise your hand.
We won't do that, sir, please. Address your comments to us. Thank you.
The, I would like to point out that all the letters of, of support, all of the letters of support in favor of this project were written, except for the one, I guess, that came in today, were written before the story polls went up. They were written as a result of one of the developers visiting all the neighbors with a bottle of wine and asking them if they would be willing to support the project. And, and I guarantee you, as I'm standing here now, that I didn't find out about these letters of support until the staff report came out on Friday. The next hearing, I will bring to you letters from all of the people, with the exception of 2 Westward, that retract their support for this project, because I'm sure people just did not understand the, the perception, or the, the impacts that this would have. To give you a sense of, of the impact that this house would, this, this 4,700 square foot house would have, oh, and by the way, that, the, the house is 700 square feet larger than the restaurant you're going to be considering later on tonight.
I, I do, I'm gonna ask you to be pertinent with, 'cause you've gone over the time here.
I, I'm sorry. So, having lived in the house for 33 years, I was hoping that I'd get more than a minute a decade to make a presentation. But, but I'll, I'll, I'll make my points brief. The, the, the massing of the house, the size of the house is incompatible with the neighborhood. You cannot make the finding required by the design review ordinance. The point was made that the guidelines in, in the zoning code are overridden, if you will, by the design review. And the design review requirements are that these, this is not a guarantee of entitlement, that this is in fact a, is simply the outer limits of what can be built. The, the views, the impact of the views from our property, and, and, and it was a nice song and dance about that people don't have a right to, to views, that's in the context of private litigation. That's not in the context of the ability of the town to follow its, its own rules. And in fact, the community development policies and the general plan say that you should take into consideration the views from the neighboring, the impact on views from the neighboring properties.
Yes.
And, and.
I agree, and I understand, yes.
And, and just one final point. If you look at the, the photos, and I apologize for amateur Photoshop, but if you look at the photos that are attached to the back of, of my letter, I mean, it's gonna destroy our quality of life, basically. We'll be unable to use the backyard any further.
Just as a good point of clarification, since we have you as a willing member of the public here, so, the, I'm looking at the civil survey here, and it looks to me like that wood fence is somewhere around 10 feet from the property line.
That's approximately correct.
Okay.
I, I'm not exactly certain there, if you were in the backyard of the, of 8 Westward, there are some trees that have been sprayed with a red paint that I believe is the property line. I think that's correct.
It would drop down about six feet.
Yeah. And so, and so, in, they, they, the applicant talks about having made, you looked at numerous ways to lessen the impacts. What they didn't look at was reducing the size of the house. They, they, they desire to build a 4,700 square foot house, they've never lived at the site, they, they just, it's not their community. And, and so, it's, it really is a round peg in a square hole where, where they wanna force their, their image of what they wanna live in into a community that doesn't, doesn't matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next, please.
My name's Deborah Jacobson, I live around the corner on Privateer Drive and have lived in the neighborhood for over, over 35 years. I have concerns about the sheer size of the, of the home. It is out of character in the neighborhood. It's a neighborhood of modestly sized homes, about 50 years old. There's no question that we're going through a period of modernization as people buy. The neighborhood has changed in its complexion and the residents in the neighborhood, we've had some turnover, there's no question. But, this is not in character of the neighborhood. The architect talked about the modern farmhouse style of this home. That is not the character of this neighborhood. Regarding the size, the size is about double what most of the homes are in the neighborhood. Having had a family member who went through the Oakland Fire and rebuilding that entire neighborhood, there is one home on the block that is about twice the square footage of every other home on the block, and it sticks out like a sore thumb. It's a McMansion, and that is not in character of the neighborhood. I have concerns about the bulk, and I think one of the commissioners mentioned about the vertical versus the horizontal presentation of the home. That is something I have a concern about. I also went by the property, I drive by there every day, and saw the sightline, saw the sight polls, and it's clear that these are higher and have more impact than other homes in the neighborhood, no question. There is a massiveness of this that is not in character of the neighborhood. And we're trying to preserve the look of the neighborhood. This is not consistent with that look in the neighborhood. And while it may not require a variance, that doesn't mean that it is homogeneous in terms of an existing neighborhood. So, I would urge the commission to ask for significant changes, i.e. reduction in the square footage so it is more consistent with the neighborhood, to address the vertical issue of this so that perhaps we can change how it looks as well as reducing the square footage. So, that's my, that's my feeling about that. Having lived in the neighborhood for 35 years, it disturbs me to see this type of McMansion being proposed in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Jim Robinson, Ash Avenue in Corder Madera. I guess, I'm not an opponent or a proponent of the project. If I, as I look at the elevation, it looks like, it looks very attractive to me, but the thing that caught my eye was the size of the home, and I noted the 4,600 square feet. I looked at the tax rolls, I found 2,200 square feet. And I looked at, I recall 20 years ago when they built Verona Place in 97, 98, those were the largest homes being built, constructed in Corder Madera at the time, even bigger than, than Madera del Presidio. But those homes are on large lots, are on acre lots, and the smaller lot, the smaller size square footage of the home, I looked up today, was I think 32, or 3,400 square feet. The maximum size lot, or the maximum size square footage was 4,264 square feet. When I looked at the difference between the size of this lot, size of Verona Place lot, the size of home, it does seem to be massive and certainly larger than what we now have in this area on the base, I call the bayside of the town. But I also recall years ago when someone wanted to add a garage or add a bedroom to 1,100 square foot home in Madera Gardens, and people were saying, you know, I raised a family of five, 1,100 square feet, why do you need an extra 300 square feet? So, that's why we have these great minds behind this table, and the staff, I hope we resolve these issues. But my primary concern is what precedent sets, because it'll either be a good precedent or a bad precedent, for others gonna be able to look at that home on Westward and say, this is what we approve, so we'd like to do something like that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi, I'm Margaret Bandell, I live at 180 Prince Royal Drive, and I've lived there for more than 35 years. This is my neighborhood. You all know, probably remember what happened with my house, so it's like a deja vu a little bit. But, this is my neighborhood, and you're supposed to protect the character of my neighborhood, and that's in the town's general plan. And the town's general plan is like the constitution we follow. That constitution is supposed to protect the neighborhood. It changes a little bit, but a neighborhood in transition doesn't mean you just put in a mishmash of different style houses, of different sizes, and different masses, and say that's transition. And by the way, Phyllis, that mishmash term is architectural.
Okay, thank you.
And so, I'm asking, that you protect the character of the neighborhood, keep it a family neighborhood. This is a McMansion. It's huge, I have gone by, I have seen where it is, and also, protect the view. That's not fair. That's a massive change in the view that Mr. Sherwood has from his backyard, and we all sit in our backyard, and the idea that you don't have a view while you're transitioning to another space, that's, that's just ridiculous. So, protect my neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you. Who else is gonna step up and comment on this application?
Hi, Phyllis Galanis, I'm over at 215 Prince Royal Drive, also on the bayside. I wasn't going to speak until Margaret mentioned view. And to hear you all talk about views as being significant or insignificant, when we bought our houses, we bought the view. And a real estate agent didn't say, excuse me, you're renting this view. Because the town council or the planning commission can come along and say, oh, well, this person wants to build a 4,000 square foot home, and, you know, well, if you move over here, you can kinda get the view that you have now from your big windows with no obstructions. I'm with Margaret. I think the town really does need to look at protecting the views of the people who have already bought the property, improved the properties, kept the properties going for so many years. And it is not okay for someone else to come in and say, your quality of view doesn't matter. I object to that strongly. So, I agree with her, please protect what we have so far. And you're right, you would be setting a precedent. And you started doing that with Margaret's house. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? All right. So, we'll bring it back up here to the dais to continue the discussion. And, that's, that's a good idea, yes, we can certainly do that at this point, if you wanna suggest that. Would the applicant like to respond to any other public comment?
Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said. Thank you to the members of the public for, for your comments. I, I wanna apologize if I came across as crass and unwilling to think about a neighbor's view. I hope that in my presentation, you understand that a great deal of thought was actually given to this view. In fact, there was an early discussion with the neighbor as to what, what was the view that you were most trying to protect and preserve, and we understood that it was from your living room windows. And, and that's why the house was not shifted closer to the street.
This will be a direct to your comments, up here, please, thank you.
Sorry. And so, we, we did look at shifting the house close to the street, but we thought that would be detrimental to the living room views. And so, it was a difficult conflict, frankly, to preserve front, front of the house views and rear of the house views. So, we were conscientious of those. When I said that no one has an inherent right to a view in California, you're right, the California Supreme Court has said so, unless a municipality has adopted an ordinance that says so. And Corder Madera has not, but they can. And I know that that's something that's on the back burner, but I also understand that a lot of property owners would probably come out and say, you're literally going to give my neighbors a view easement effectively over my lot and not allow me to build up or build out or change footprints? And that's a really dangerous legislative decision, but that's a decision for the town council. I'm just reminding the commission to, to implement and uphold what the municipal code says. And we believe that we've evaluated the views, and we have done everything that we can to avoid substantially adversely impacting them from the residence and the active use areas. And I've identified why it is that we do not believe that that ceded area in the rear is one of those areas that, that warrants the same preservation as it might for Margaret's, you know, unobstructed windows, which might be your kitchen or a living room or a dining room, or other situations. And so, every application is viewed on the merits, the four corners of that document, and we think that this one has merit. But I understand that the tone is that we're probably gonna get a continuance with specific direction. So, my request to the commission is, please be as thoughtful and objective in the feedback that you can give so that we can implement that direction effectively.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll bring it back up here then.
You just close the, close the public hearing, I think, would be good to.
Yeah, well.
I apologize.
No.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna, I just wanna, I just wanna respond to one thing he said, since he wasn't , I was hoping he was representing.
I, I'm sorry, no, thank you. All right, all right. So, I think that we're, we're not gonna get into this ad hoc discussion here about it, but here we are with some very clear statements from the applicant and some statements from the neighbors, and they're in opposition to each other. So, before I just open it up to the individual commissioners to throw out their points, I wanna bring up a series of considerations so that we are focused in this, and it has to be surrounding the findings, essentially. So, we have bulk and mass to deal with, and so we have height of this project, and we have the sheer size of the project. So, they are elements that can be addressed individually in height and in square footage. Those are two different items. We can talk about the architecture, which is, you know, something that we encourage to have people have new architecture brought into a neighborhood, but when it takes on this size, then it has greater impact. And I'm saying that for myself, but I'm putting that out there because we've heard from other people that they feel it has impact. So, then we have the view here. So, it is clear that the general plan and the staff has put into the report specifics about a view being something that we just can't take away in a significant manner from a neighboring property. It says it in the required findings. Significance is the key word here, and it is our job to. Significance is the key word here, and it is our job to consider what is significant in this case. So it is written into our duty to review and use the general plan as it is written, and that's what we have to consider about that view. So you've seen the photos, you've seen the story polls, you've seen what gets cut off, and I think that you have to determine whether that's significant. So the placement of the house is, has been reviewed by the architect. We can look at different options for impacting the current design if we want to impact that design. We can do a number of things. We can ask that they lower it, we can ask that they reduce the footprint, we can ask that they expand the first floor, reduce the second floor. There's a number of things that we can, tools that we can use here to address the size of this project. So they have room on the site to make a larger first floor, or they could drop the house. There's any number of things that can be done. So they did say that they would make a concession to the height of the house in the pitch of the roof. So at the moment, that first floor is ten foot, and the outer plates are eight foot two, and then it's an open slope ceiling on the inside. Many times we have asked that the outer plates be dropped a little bit. Doesn't have to be eight foot. There is a code direction for what can be done with the dropping of the outer wall plates, and then the roof design, the roof can drop as well. So I put before each of you these things, the architecture, the height, the massing, the footprint, and all of that. So I know each of you have clear thoughts about all of this stuff. So, Mr. Lee.
All right. So I think one of the points that was missed is that if staff or anybody else suggests that the project addressed the massing, that a three-foot pushback isn't really dealing with significant massing problems in the building. I think one of the things I first noticed in the entire neighborhood and a conscientious massing of the original buildings is there's one gable, and it's usually closer to the uphill neighbor, and it's about setbacks for view and other impressions, like not putting it out on the highest point of the leveled lots. So when that's suggested, and that that might not be a character that we want to add to the neighborhood, is to start building that second gable on the other half of a second story building. You know, options that look at not doing that, I would like to heard that there was, you know, some exploration of that or justification why that wasn't. And we heard it, you know, the owner wants two wings, but I've done enough massing studies in my life to know that you can provide two wings of a house in many different orientations that are not that double gabled, and I'd be happy to tell you a hundred of them. So, you know, the other thing is, I guess that's for that, for style, I think farmhouse is fine, but I think in that high gabled portion on the one side, I think that it's inappropriate for that materiality. So, you know, I went through the whole neighborhood. There's a lot of different character that ranges through all kinds of time periods and stuff like that. So that's not really what my issue is with the materiality. I think, you know, some of the windows, the bronze, even maybe the metal roof, might be acceptable for me. I disagree with the concept that the views are not within the purview of the design review to preserve for the neighbor. I do think that's a significant view of the ocean or the bay, and I do think that the massing blocks it. So I would strongly suggest, if you want me to find the findings, that the massing is oriented that doesn't do that. So I think that's some of my initial statements, and I look forward to talking to the rest of the commission about it.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman.
Okay, thank you. I think, just overall, I think the house is too big for the character of this neighborhood. I agree that it is a neighborhood in transition, but when we talk about being in scale and harmonious with the existing site as well as the other neighboring development, and that which will come before us, I'm sure over the years to come, in this neighborhood, I think finding number four is going to be challenging, the scale piece of it. And so, I mean, even two westward, which does appear to be much larger than everything else in that, on that street and in the surrounding area, you know, is thirty-six hundred square feet. So I think going an additional thousand square feet above and beyond that is problematic. I think the second story in particular needs to be smaller. I think that the impact to the neighbor to the north is, sorry, excuse me, to the south, to ten westward is too much, taking away the entire bay view. I think that is a significant and adverse impact to their view. And in terms of the architecture and design, I think it actually is a very attractive design. I don't have an issue with the modern farmhouse aesthetic, because I do agree there's a wide variety of design features in that neighborhood. So those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Bundy.
I think with the changes that you're proposing to the street side of the house, I think it's something that fits in with what's being done with other remodels and major remodels. And so I think, you know, that will be something that can fit into the neighborhood. And so it's not so much trouble with the bulk that I have, but the bulk that impacts the views. So I can't make the findings based on the impact on the views on number three. And I think that it needs to be redesigned with more of a first floor going to the rear that would not impact the views of the neighbor.
Thank you, Bob. That's concise. Ms. Metcalf.
Okay. Well, one of the things when we look at the height and the mass, even though the code reads thirty-one feet, we are starting, or thirty feet, we're starting with something that is tall. It's going to end up forty-some-odd feet. Now, obviously, the code does say thirty, and it's thirty from the bottom of the house to the top of the house. But that makes a significant difference in how it appears in the neighborhood. And I've brought this point up before, that when you've got something that is at the top of a hill, and you start building up on it, it can really overpower what is going on. So there is a great, I have a problem with the bulk and the mass. I mean, the house by itself, I think, projects itself as being too large. That's why I mentioned, as did Charles, about changing the siding, you know, trying to trick the eye a little bit by using horizontal siding. I also, you know, we keep on talking about the south elevation and the neighbor effect. When you look at that, it is, you know, you've got an interesting side on the north elevation. The south elevation is just this bland, the man is going to be looking at a blank wall except for two tiny windows. And please don't tell me you're going to put vines on it. You know, there has to be something done with that facade itself to make it more interesting to the eye. I mean, the side that does have the break between the first and second floors and changes, you're putting up the ome trees, and there you did mention you're putting vines, but that should be worked on. The view is important. And to me, except for people who are concerned about views from their bathroom windows, other views are what the person wants to view. Some people like to view something from one place, some from another. Each has to be looked at individually. If the people in ten have a certain place where they like to sit to have a view, that should be looked at, not deciding that, well, it's going to be this room or that room. I think we have to take into consideration the view that is used by the occupant of the home that's going to be affected. So that's another thing. The placement of the house on the lot, it's not so much the placement as the impact that that design has the way it exists. We try to encourage to have larger first stories and to minimize the second story as much as possible. And when I drove down there, most of the homes that had second stories, they were not from one side edge to the other side edge. And I think that should be considered. And for the family who's concerned about keeping the whole family together, as someone who raised a bunch of kids, sometimes it's advantageous to not have them all on the same floor with you. I could tell you from past experience, they survived and I did. But I think it's important to look at reorienting the way this house is set up. You could have your five bedrooms. You could have the rooms you want, but it is not going to work in this location, in this community, in this neighborhood, the way you perceive it. And that has nothing to do, and I've said it before, I'll say again, in the attractiveness of the design. It's a very attractive design. It just does not work in this location.
Thank you, Phyllis. So I think that we need to narrow in on a couple of things that we want to tell these guys about this project. So first off, we know that the view is an issue. So, and I agree, that the view is a significant impact to the neighbor, and it would be even more significant if the neighbor placed a fence on his property line. He would look, I mean, it would, straight shot to the water, and if he builds a house, if this project is built, then his view isn't significantly impacted from anywhere, just about in his backyard. So I think that's why it's significant. It covers a lot of the property back there. So we're talking about the bulk and the size. So if we're talking square footage, and these guys want some direction here, we pointed out that two westward, which was remodeled a few years ago, was thirty-seven hundred square feet. Most of the homes are two thousand to twenty-five in the direct neighborhood there. So I'm going to ask each one of you if you want to make a statement about a square footage limit that you would like to suggest that these guys aim for. It's not a requirement, they can still come back, but, you know, do you have something you want to say? Phyllis?
I'd like to ask Doug a question, which he may have the answer to, because we were discussing the sizes of homes. Do you know how many bedrooms are in that next door house, that thirty-seven hundred square feet or?
I do not.
It said six bedrooms somewhere, but I don't know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I saw six bedrooms somewhere in one of the charts. I don't know if that's accurate or not.
Just be small.
The house down the hill?
The one that's thirty-seven hundred and something?
Yeah, the number two.
Number two.
Yeah.
Six bedrooms, four baths.
Oh, okay. So it can be done. You can have smaller rooms. I would like to see it brought down to no more than maybe thirty-seven fifty. That's just, I think that would work and would work for this family.
Bob, do you have any thoughts about the square footage of this?
No, I'm not as concerned about the square footage as the real impact on the views. And if the first floor was extended into the backyard area and were able to get the number of bedrooms and not impact the neighbors, I would be okay with that.
Okay. Jennifer?
I would agree with that, even though I said that I think, I do think it's quite large and out of character with the neighborhood, but I'm not going to dictate that it has to be thirty-seven hundred square feet. I think that would be more consistent with the neighborhood. But if the applicant's able to reorient some of the square footage to the first floor where it doesn't impact the view of the neighbor upslope, then I don't care that much if they want to keep that additional thousand square feet.
Okay. Mr. Lee.
Yeah. So as a father that's going to have three teenage sons at some point, I don't want to restrict anyone's ability to add as much square footage as possible to house them, right? So, but I think that if you, if it was all forty-seven hundred square feet on one level, I don't even know that we'd be having a major discussion about it. It's because of the way that they're addressing the second story. And so if there is a reduction needed because of the massing, then I'd say whatever square footage leaves, the problems that we're finding in the massing with the neighbors or the community, you know, then that's the number that's set. But if that, if they can address those issues, you know, fairly, not through semantics, I think that, you know, then they have a project that I would review even at forty-five hundred, because I don't know that that's really the issue.
Okay. So then, you know, what we're talking about is this vertical height, and most of the homes in the neighborhood have a step back on the second floor. They all recede back from the footprint of the first floor, virtually, and they use a roof line or something to do that. And while this has a farmhouse architectural appeal, and I don't mind it, and I think it's perfectly viable, it's too tall and the footprint has to change. So I think that if we were to say to these guys that the first floor has to be a larger footprint, and the second floor has to be a much smaller footprint, that that would be a consensus that we could arrive at. Is that?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
Excuse me, Peter. It shows under lot coverage, the max is thirty, and they're at twenty-three percent, so they do have leeway in which to, you know, for that footprint, expand the footprint.
That's exactly right. So they can, they can push out on the lower. So, and we've also said that infringement of the view of number eight is significant, and that's an agreed upon piece.
Number ten.
Number ten.
Number ten, yes, that it is directly in the line of view. So in order to do that, I think they could, they could leave the vertical board and baton and introduce elements to break up the difference between the first and the second floor. I think that's something that I'm hearing would be viable, you know, because then the massing would not appear to be so much, and the height would not be so great. So I think that the south elevation has enough of a break in it. The north elevation is rather stark, and that's what they would be looking at. There is some shrubbery there.
I think you've got to be first.
I'm sorry, yes, the south elevation is the stark elevation, right?
It's this one, Matt, the top one.
So that's a minor shack. I know how you feel. Dr. Bundy, are you okay with that elevation? That is the?
Yeah, as I've looked at other houses in the neighborhoods, the side portions of the house don't have much articulation, don't have a lot of penetrations, and so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Jennifer?
I don't have a problem with it.
That south elevation?
Well, just in general, if it needs looking at, I don't know that I object to it, except for the fact that it reads so vertically, right? But so, an exploration would be good of whether that could be broken up or not.
So you're getting some pretty clear indications here of what we are recommending to you to come back to the commission with. One thing that you threw out as a nonusable feature would be to drop the house into the ground, you know, a couple of feet. I don't quite understand why you couldn't do that with a garage that is currently well above the street level there. You would have taller retaining wall to the south, but you would have less of an impact impact to the house on the north. And if you did that, you might less reduce your impact of the house to the, to the south. So, let's see, let's just go back over this. Shall we? We do not have a directive for square footage reduction, but we do believe that the footprint of the house needs to change so that the second story does not come out as, as large and does not impede the view. And the articulation between the stories needs to be created, because there's going to be a difference in the first to second story of this house. We're saying that the board and batten is okay. I think we should come back with a new design for it, but it would not be so offensive if the stories are setback.
Yes.
Well, I would just suggest in the, where the siding carries up two floors, because of the vertical nature of that, either they explore an alternative material, horizontal orienta- orientation or solid type material.
A belly band.
But, you know, it, it, it just brings into question the kind of, the massiveness when it's, it's only in the second, if it's, if it's single story, if it's broken up, it's much easier. So, that would be what I would hope to see.
All right. So, what we're asking the applicant to do is to come back. The applicant has the right to ask us to make a decision. If we were going to make a decision, we would ask staff to create a motion, to create a resolution for denial at this point. But I think what you've asked for is a series of specific architectural recommendations to come back to staff, process the application, and then get it back on the calendar with the commission. So, with that said, I don't want to get into a discussion of semantics, but I think that we've said a fair number of things that give you a lot of leeway, since we're not going to design a project for you. I myself would like to see a reduction in square footage, but I'm in the minority here, so... So, there's two of us that would like to see this as a smaller house, thirty-six to four thousand. I think it is too big. I know this is a spec house. It is, it's going to be turned over.
So, motion to, are you, motion to continue are you asking for?
Yes, we're, at this point, then, I would ask for that motion to continue.
To a time uncertain, so that...
Date uncertain.
A date uncertain. I'll make a motion to continue the project at eight Westwood Drive to a time, a date uncertain.
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, this will mean we will schedule, we'll work, obviously, to wait and see when the applicant has materials and what, we'll work with them to see when they will be ready to come back to the commission with, in response to the comments they've heard this evening. And we'll schedule it, and have a public notice and all the, at that point in time.
Right, so, I would ask that, while everybody's still in the room, that when they put up new story polls, that they use flags on the story polls and so forth, or use netting?
More visible, better, better visuals.
If you use the netting, it's better.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's take a five-minute break here. Let's return to regular business, please. Thank you very much for hanging in there. We still have a good-sized attendance here for this next item. So, we're very interested to hear, this is a study session of Amy's drive-through at fifty-eight thirty-nine Paradise Drive, a preliminary review of a proposed new drive-through restaurant at fifty-eight thirty-nine Paradise Drive. So, it's been rumored for a long time, and now we finally have something to look at. Pleased to see it. Mr. Bush, it is your job to familiarize us with this, and then we'll have the applicant make a presentation, and we'll go from there.
All righty. Thank you. So, just, just as a reminder, some, as some of you may know, and some of you may have participated in other study sessions previously, but the, the goal here and the process here is not to come away with a decision. We do not have an application at this time. This is a pre-application meeting where we're kind of looking things at, at a ten-thousand, twenty-thousand-foot level, if you will, you know, looking through the concepts, trying to understand the ideas here and what, what questions come up in this pre-application process, and provide an opportunity for the commission and members of the public and all, all who are here to participate kind of in this early discussion of this, of this idea and this pre-application that we've, that we received from Amy's drive-through. So, I think staff's just going to provide a very brief overview of the site here and just touch on a couple of the issues that we're looking for feedback for tonight, and then provide that opportunity for the applicant to speak about the, in more detail about the project. So, if we can get this to work, we'll be on our way. There we go. So, what we're looking at here is a, is a parcel.
Jennifer, put down her mic.
A parcel on Paradise Drive. It's adjacent to Highway one oh one. It is, it does not have any immediately adjacent neighboring properties, other than the public right-of-way and the Caltrans right-of-way, and the highway and, Highway one oh one on the west, and Paradise Drive to the east. This parcel is zoned C three, which is intended to create and enhance areas where automobile-associated traveler services are desired, and where uses such as restaurants, motels, automotive services are to be located. Kind of the existing context is a number of automobile dealerships, automotive-oriented uses. There's a, you know, doggy daycare there and some different, different businesses in the immediate vicinity. This site in particular served as the home for a Denny's restaurant for many years, forty, forty or fifty years, I believe, but has been vacant for the past few years. And here we are with an, an application, looking at, reimagining the site. So, moving on, the general plan designation here is a mixed-use commercial. And just to provide, again, just a little of the existing context, this is the previous Denny's building, which is currently on the lot. I believe there's a fifty-seven, there's a parking lot that surrounds it on either side with spots for fifty-seven cars. There's on-street parking, and there's an entrance and an exit. We'll go over some of that in the, in the site plan orientation. But the proposal here is to replace this building, to demolish it completely and construct a new building that would be around the same size, which is thirty-seven hundred square feet, with both indoor and outdoor seating areas, as well as a drive-through service. Again, so this was looking from Paradise Drive, looking kind of northwest with Tam always present in the background there. And this is looking from the highway off-ramp, again, looking at, looking at the building. So, as you can see, there's that narrow patch there that's currently vegetated that kind of separates, very slim margin between the site and the highway. And just to take a couple slides here from the applicant, there are packets that have been provided to you with some conceptual drawings. Also, they've been provided on a special webpage that's on townofcordmadera.org for this application, where all these materials are available. They're also available in limited quantities at the back of the room for, for the general public as well. So, there's some questions that come up here that we raised in the staff report. I think the first kind of major question is whether or not a drive-through service would be possible here. Currently, a restaurant with a drive-through is not one of the permitted or conditionally permitted uses in this zone or in any zone in town. There is a list of permitted and conditionally permitted uses for all commercial zones. If something is not specifically on that list or substantially similar to what is on that list, then it is prohibited in town, and that goes for drive-throughs. As the conditionally permitted use that is closest to this is a restaurant without drive-through window. So, what's being requested here or in, in the pre-application that's under discussion is whether or not a drive-through could be added as one of those permitted uses. So, what that would require potentially is a zoning ordinance amendment to add that use to the list of conditionally permitted uses. So, that is one of the, one of the significant questions here. Also, we're looking at kind of a whole reconfiguration of the site. That includes changing the, the entrances and exits to the site, the changing in the configuration of the parking, the location of the building, as well as complete introduction of new landscaping throughout the entire site. So, really, we're looking at a complete overhaul of the site. Here's kind of, again, taken from the applicant's pre-submital package, kind of showing and comparing the existing location of the parking and the building with the proposed. So, we're not seeing a significant difference in the size of the building itself, but in terms of the use, obviously, you see here a drive-through lane that would accommodate, I believe, nineteen cars. One of the questions here is, well, basically, in, in the application, when you look at the allocation of the parking spaces and how they're provided, nineteen of those spaces that are required are shown in the drive-through itself. So, looking for some guidance on whether, first of all, if, if a drive-through is possible, if that is an acceptable way of distributing those required parking spaces. And of course, the bigger question of how many parking spaces should be, should be required overall. They're also proposing eleven bicycle parking spaces, and I believe electrical charging stations and kind of a variety, trying to provide for a variety of, of needs. So, the other, other questions involve, you know, the addition of a, of a new entrance and exit here, and just kind of looking at the circulation. I think there's some, there's some very good variety of drawings that have been provided in the packet that kind of highlight at a conceptual level some of the circulation challenges here. You have a Paradise Drive coming through that's a two-lane road. You have parking on both sides of the, of the road. You may have, you know, some visibility concerns getting onto and out of, out of the lot that may be raised, as well as kind of, I think, general questions about directing traffic and where that would go. And speaking of traffic, traffic is definitely a consideration here and something that would, would require more information. Again, this is a pre-application packet, so in, in the future, with a future application, we'd be requesting a traffic study, as well as further information, potentially, you know, comparing the existing single location of Amy's drive-through, which is in Roanoke Park, kind of looking at the distribution of, of customers through the drive-through, who, who comes in and sits, who comes in through the drive-through, you know, how does that affect potential parking demands and parking needs and traffic generation? You know, it generates a lot of questions, which is why we're here tonight, and just wanted to touch on some of those things. So, just real quickly, as I mentioned, it would require a zoning ordinance amendment to add a drive-through to the list of permitted use, conditionally permitted uses. It would require a design review for a new structure, new landscaping, new site, site work in a commercial zone, and it would also require a conditional use permit, and a traffic study would be part of assessing, assessing that. Lastly, there's a question relating to building location. This is not only in the C three zone and the mixed-use commercial general plan designation, but this is also in the Paradise San Clemente specific plan area established in nineteen seventy-nine. And that has certain provisions for landscaping, as well as setbacks. And the, the plan is good in that it establishes the purposes and the, the reason and the intent behind the regulations within it. And as far as setbacks go, they've established sort of a tiered setback to try to reduce the bulk of two-story structures, sort of with an imposing presence on the street. And so, there's some questions there that I think the applicant may wish to go into further detail about. So, beyond that, is there anything else we... No, there's one, one other thing. Obviously, I, I just wanted to reiterate, this is really an opportunity for the applicant who is here very early in the, in the process. We encourage this of applicants to come at this point, before they get very, into very detailed architectural drawings, it's been a lot of time and money and energy, to hear directly from the commission, hear comments from the public. So, we are pleased that they are here doing this. They obviously already have some models here as well, some other visuals to help sort of with the process, not only for the commission, but for the public to understand the initial concepts here. And I just, you know, I just want to mention that, that this is really an opportunity to provide them feedback from the commission early in the process, so that they can come back and think about how they want to incorporate some of those comments and feedback into an application. This is not, again, it's, it's about guidance and feedback based on the information available at this point in time, which is not the full allotment of information that you would have as part of an application, of course, as we saw earlier. So, the last thing is just, obviously, with design review, architectural design, and I'm sure they'll be interested in hearing how you feel about some of the moves and the, some of the architecture and design elements that they've put forth here. But looking forward to hearing from the, I'm sure you're looking forward to hearing from the applicant. We also generally give them a little bit more time to go through how they came to this process and came to the site or approaching the site. So, looking forward to hearing that from them on those, those aspects of the project as well.
Thank you, Adam. Doug, very informative and brief staff report, as long, the San Clemente information is more significant than the staff report. I want to ask you guys if you have any questions of Doug before we have the applicant come up there.
No, I do not.
Phyllis, no? Dr. Bundy? Jennifer?
Have you been to the one in Roanoke Park?
I have not. So, at this time, can I make a disclosure as we move forward?
Yes, please.
Right, so, I want to disclose that approximately twelve years ago, Andrew Dunbar for Intersize Architects was a graduate professor for myself. But even though I know Mr. Dunbar, nothing about our history would create any undue influence or bias either for or against the project moving forward in all disclosure.
All right, we'll hold you to that. All right.
And I had, I had one more question.
Yes.
So, the definition of drive-through, I, I've seen, I've seen a lot of new methods of getting food to cars, such as the McDonald's drive-in in Marin, where they actually walk the food out to people that have ordered with, on their cell phones. So, do we have a clearly, clear understanding and definition of what a drive-in is versus something more like the old-school, you know, diners or something where they bring it out to you? There, there isn't a precise definition in our code for what a drive-through is, but I think from staff's perspective, a drive-through is the type of drive-through that you actually see at various restaurants, where you are pulling up to a speaker, you order your food, and then you drive and pick up your food at, at another window where you pay as well. Those other operations actually do, we do have some of those other operations in the town of Cordamere today. So, those are not, staff's view, considered drive-throughs. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do have one question for you guys, and I'm sure that I'll ask the architect of this question. In their site sections, specifically page eight point one, where we're talking about the tower, right, in eight point two, so it says forty-five foot height, allowance ten percent area. So, is this something that is conditioned in the ordinances, or how does that come about?
So, I mean, the applicant can definitely speak in more detail to the, to how they put together these diagrams, but this, I think this goes to show that there is a requirement, there's a, there's a maximum height for within a certain setback. And then, as soon as you exceed that setback, then there's a higher maximum height to try to create a tiered, a tiering in respect to Paradise Drive. And then there's a, I believe, a maximum height as well that's established regardless of...
And that would be the thirty-five-foot building max, but it says allowance ten percent area. Is that something that is created within the code that they can do that?
Well, we, we have it in the, in our zoning ordinance in terms of...
Well, we have it in the, in our zoning ordinance in terms of, it's 1824, our general regulations related to height, there's an allowance for exceedances above maximum height limits, up to forty-five feet for certain features, including tower elements. And I believe that's what the applicant is referring to in that diagram, but perhaps they can elaborate. I don't believe it's in the San Clemente Paradise Drive specific plan itself, but in the general zoning code. So there is, yes, there is a allowance in the general code for that.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, Doug, I did mean to ask about in the San Clemente Paradise Plan about calling for undergrounding of utilities. That would obviously be something that would benefit this project. It talked about this being a priority many years ago and some money being set aside for that. Is there a possibility that that could be done in conjunction with this project?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great.
And lastly, I just want to mention, this is, just in terms of the site context, this is in a FEMA floodplain, and the proposal includes details on how the applicant would respond to that, and...
Yeah, and just regarding utilities, I mean, there's obviously, there's many different utilities on the site, and there's even, I think, large PG&E's transmission wires that's an easement. I'm not talking about those, but our general plan does speak to actually, when new development occurs, that that is a, something that the town would like to see is the undergrounding of sort of common utilities along the street, yeah.
All right, so everyone ready to hear from our applicant? I would like to say, who's going to speak first off?
I'm Paul Schiefer.
Okay, and you got the cover letter here. So I want to say it's a well-put-together application at this point for study review document. Doesn't mean we want everything we see, but it's well-conceived, so please have at it.
Is this on? Oh, it's on. So, good evening. My name is Paul Schiefer, and I'm the Director of Restaurant Operations for Amy's Drive-Thru. I want to start by thanking the commission staff and the community for allowing us to bring some of these early plans and share those with you and hear your valuable feedback. Before we hear from the architects more specifics on the plan, I did want to offer a brief introduction to Amy's Kitchen as an organization, and our co-founder Rachel will also briefly talk, and it's only like two minutes, so it won't be too long. So Amy's was founded thirty years ago by Andy and Rachel. They were soon to be parents, and they found it very hard at the grocery store to find delicious and affordable food, that they wanted to feed their young family. So they got inspired and started, is this, okay, oh, okay. So from the very beginning, Amy's was focused on making it easy and enjoyable to eat well. We started using sustainable and organic agriculture from the very beginning, marrying that with traditional recipes and techniques to make really delicious food. We really have always tried to offer products for everyone, people, products for people with special dietary needs, and making our food affordable and accessible to as many people as possible. We've always treated our employees, vendors, and our customers with kindness as if they are part of our family, and it's worked. We're now the category leader in natural and organic meals. So a lot of people have asked us, why would you want to go from that business into opening a restaurant, of which we have one today? And it really started with consumers and customers asking us as early as 1995, can you do the same thing for fast food that you have done for frozen food? Make this a better industry and something I can use. So we took on that challenge, and we had over a thousand different recipes we played with and iterated with, and we came up with this concept to do classic American fast food and sort of a new, reimagined Amy's way. Our restaurant uses all organic ingredients. Each order is actually prepared from scratch for that customer, and we really try to make some food that tastes great and is also good for you. We have a very thoughtful sustainability program that we recently had audited, and we found out that our restaurant actually has half the greenhouse gas emissions of compared to a traditional fast-food restaurant, and again, that was from a third-party source. And our restaurant in Sonoma County has been very successful. We have some very loyal customers who love the ambiance, they love the food, and sort of the sense of community that we've created. We'd be very proud to consider Corder Madara as our second location. We think this is a great community, there's a lot of need for good, quality, organic food that's also affordable, and we really do want to work closely with the planning commission, the community, and all of the stakeholders here to really learn from you and make sure that we build something that fits the unique character of the town. So with that being said, Rachel's just going to offer a couple of quick words, and then we'll get on with the architects.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Berliner, mother to Amy and mother of Amy's Kitchen. I had forty-five seconds, he told me, so how do I tell everything? The most exciting thing for me is to be able to provide this service to the people in Marin. We have so many customers that have come up to the restaurant and asked that we please, it's too far for them to drive, could we please open something in Marin? And Linda, who is the owner of Denny's, I was giving her a tour of the restaurant when we were kind of trying to decide whether we could buy this or not or lease it. And so I took her up to the drive-through window, which is my favorite thing to do when I go to the restaurant, because people are so happy, they're so grateful that they can bring their kids and they can go to this restaurant that provides more natural food and organic food, and a place they can bring their babies that are, you know, in their, they wouldn't bring them to a regular drive-through. So we're standing by the drive-through window, and I'm talking, and a girl pulled up, and she said, I said, oh, you know, how do you like the food, or I, some comment. She said, well, I love the food, but would you please open one in Marin? And she's standing right next to me, and I, and we looked at each other, and we said, is this, is this planned? But that was the case. I get so many letters, and I'm really excited to be here. I love coming here, I shop here, this is, you know, I live in Petaluma, there's nowhere to shop in Petaluma, so I'm always shopping here. And I always say, why can't there be something in Petaluma like there is it in Corder Madara? But anyway, I hope that this can work out and that we can provide this service to this community.
Thank you very much. Okay. That was the home touch, fun touch, now we have to...
Good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Zoe Astrakhan from Interstice Architects, Principal Landscape Architect with our firm. And also this evening, you'll be hearing from Andrew Dunbar, Principal Architect from Interstice as well. He'll be speaking more about the building, I'm going to speak a little bit more about the site. And I wanted to reiterate that we consider this very early concept design a project in formation, but we have sort of set a bunch of design intentions and goals, I believe, that I wanted to introduce. We talked a little bit about the project description, thirty-seven hundred square feet was mentioned, but we're likely moving more toward four thousand square feet in drive-through, about three, over three thousand square feet of outdoor patio space as part of the project, parking for forty-one cars, nineteen queuing cars, and bike parking as well. But the design intentions, I think, are what we want to talk about today and that vision, and how we, we've thought through the process of how that turns into a site and a building. First and foremost, we want to create an inviting place, there's a service to this community, and an asset for the town of Corder Madara. So the, the sort of highlights that I want to hit have to do with the character and form, both of site and building as one. The intention to have it be a relatively humble building with a sort of vernacular, recognizable vernacular vocabulary, that it creates a warm and welcoming place, that it enhances Paradise Drive according to the specific plan, and that it is a sort of simple building volume that then has a hierarchy of elements that are, that are visible and, again, inviting. There was reference to the unusual sort of shape of the site, this long, narrow site, which is very different than the other parcels along Paradise Drive. And I think part of that distinctiveness is something that we want to make the best use of, and that, that the proximity to 101, Highway 101, and to Paradise, and the fact that it's separated by what typically is a frontage road, I think, is, is also part of that distinctive quality, and we just wanted to mention that briefly. We want to make sure that there's significant outdoor space, this climate, of course, lends itself to that, and I think that also is complementary to the improvement of Paradise Drive. Also, we want to mention a little bit about the flood, the flood measures and dry proofing that we think will be part of the building, and also the approach to the site in relation to that. And lastly, I think really, seeing this as a community and family-friendly place, and have that read both through the site design and the architecture. And along with that idea of community is an accessible site, accessible not only by cars and vehicles, yes, it wants to be a drive-through, but it also wants to be bicycle-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, and a thoughtfully designed workplace for the people that work there. And so in looking a little bit at our process of getting back away from being close into the site, we also wanted to make sure that we've kind of re-envisioned and understood all of the connections of this place within the town of Corder Madara. And so here you see the, which was spoken about a little bit earlier by Mr. Bush, the land use on the right, the fact that it's a mixed-use commercial, which is similar to the adjacent, land uses on the other side of Paradise and on the other side of Highway 101. But I wanted to bring your attention to the bottom-left drawing, which is the zoning diagram, and also point out that I think in the package, we had misidentified in terms of circling what district it is. It's a highway commercial district, which is different than what is to the east of it on Paradise Drive, more similar to what's on the other side of 101. But in that way, it is a bit of an island within its zoning, zoning designation. And then lastly, there, as it relates to the zoning overlay, there is no zoning overlay, although it is quite close to the bay, what is it called exactly, the Baylands Risk Zone and Natural Habitat, so it's directly adjacent to that over Paradise. And then these four different aerial images at different scales, going from the town context and all of the municipalities that surround Corder Madara, this is very centrally located within Corder Madara, as you know. Then to the right, just looking at the fact that it is sort of buried within a commercial district, the blue zones, the bottom left, the proximity to the interchange and Tamalpais Drive, and how important that is as a, as a guider of the development of this site, and also the proximity to the Marsh State Marine Park, where we think that that's really an important connection in terms of the opportunity to improve the ecological health of this site, which we wanted to sort of take on as part of the development. And finally, on the right, just looking at it again, pointing out that distinct quality of this long, narrow, pointed, very different than the other parcels around it. You've seen photos of the site and the existing Denny's. And now, this plan sort of orients north to your right, just for reference, and starts to give some insight into our analysis of the site, because when we first reacted to the fact that the building, the existing Denny's building is in the center of the site, we sort of questioned if that's the right, right place for a building on the site, and how would we sort of start from scratch in a way? This highlights, of course, Paradise Drive, which is the main vehicular access, and then the commercial corridor, which are the businesses across the way, which the uses were mentioned earlier, and then adds on to this an understanding of what other alternative transportation is happening, bike paths that are nearby, by, excuse me, bus stops. The vehicular access coming off of 101 would be on the exit to Paradise Drive onto Tamalpais And then, as you'll see later in our presentation, these, there's views that are demarcated here, which are the significant views of the existing Denny's, which would also be the significant views of a future building on the site, both on 101, on Tamalpais, and on Paradise, and then views from the site. There's this wonderful view to Mount Tam, and then there's this orientation to the Corder Madara Bay that exists. And then really just understanding the site exposure, understanding microclimates, where people want to be on, on the parcel as we develop a building and the outdoor areas, and the prevailing winds. Seen the existing, existing layout, the, this shows also the building setback lines, and in the gold color, the existing overhead utility easement, as well, the sort of blue zone on the southern tip of the site is an easement for a pumping station, and then the adjacency of the Caltrans easement, which was already referenced. And then when we get closer into the site, we started to look at what some of the opportunities and constraints are in terms of putting a new building and a new program onto this property. The significant things here being the fact that there's noise from the freeway, and then the opportunity of connecting with the developing landscape across Paradise, that the businesses there, there's, you know, building setbacks and maturing landscape that we can take advantage of as we think about what, what is the best fit for a building on the site. I'm just going to quickly build up a drawing of our sort of initial program diagram on the site, again, that landscape connection, the green circles are existing trees, there are several mature trees along the back of sidewalk, mostly to the south of the site, which we want to take advantage of, the fact that we really do need to buff, buffer the landscape, have some sort of screen from the noise and visual of the highway. And then we're looking toward having a building on the southerly end of the site, because we can then sort of unify the parking, make it much more efficient on the site, and then also it improves wayfinding as people come down Paradise, they can see the building entry, they can see the parking. And then looking at entry side of building versus service side of building, the service makes a lot of sense on the south, where we already have landscaping around the existing pump station, and then outdoor seating that is shielded both from the sound by the building and from the wind, and has a south, I mean, a east, southeast exposure, which is really quite wonderful for a seating area, and again, connects to the pedestrian traffic and the vehicular traffic on, on Paradise. And here you see the circulation and the intent for a queuing lane that would line the west side of the site. Again, this long, narrow site is advantageous, in fact, for a drive-through because of that queuing area and the fact that we have the overhead easement, and entries at north and south of site, and a midway entry that is a two-way entry into the parking. And the last layer there was showing more of the internal landscape buffering and the landscaping along Paradise as part of the setback and around the outdoor seating. And that has evolved into a site plan, which is underlaid under that diagram, as we start to sort of determine the actual configuration of the parking. And what we found is that we felt that this, this site plan represented many improvements to the site in terms of actually reducing paving on the site, increasing cars, in terms of it not being a sea of paving, but being much more an integration of landscaping and paving and pedestrian walkways, much more pedestrian-friendly, and also including an outdoor amenity of a large, quite significant patio area and seating area. Showing you the existing site again, and then a little more technical drawing that starts to talk about where the ADA spaces are and where the charging stations are, still quite diagrammatic, but also implying exactly how the service will work on the south side of the site, in a sort of trash enclosure that could be enclosed and covered and screened. And then quickly, I just want to show you sort of what we anticipate in terms of how the circulation would work, and would love to have some feedback on that. We have the circulation, vehicular circulation into the parking, into and out of the parking, and then the upper right-hand corner is a legend that's going to, sort of, those things are going to unfold quickly here, the queuing. are going to unfold quickly here, the queuing. So you're going in, it's a one-way circulation, and out the southern entry, I mean, exit, pedestrian circulation, where we'd have dedicated walkways on either side of the parking area, and then also pedestrian circulation off of the sidewalk directly to the building or into the outdoor seating area. And then employee circulation and service shown in blue. And then lastly, a layer that sort of anticipates the fact that we will have signage and wayfinding within the site that will be, be for customers and wayfinding. And with that, Andrew's going to speak a little bit more to the building aspects and building design. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Andrew Dunbar, architect, principal at Interstis Architects. And Zoe went into great detail about the site, which is where most of our work has been really focused, but we do want to talk a little bit more about the massing and how that has been developed in the building itself. So I'm going to just talk about the fit of the building as it's aligned now. It lends itself, as a restaurant, divided pretty simply between a large, open, very well-lit space, tall for gathering the people together, having a great place to make connections of community, together and eat, beside which is the protected outside realm. And then the other half of this rectangular volume is devoted almost entirely to the preparation, arrival, storage of the ingredients, the food, which are quite complex because of the nature of the quality of the food being offered, occupy almost half, maybe more than half of that volume to the side. And so this has enabled us by taking this sort of longer rectangle, rectangular building, and pushing it to the back of the site and to the south has allowed us to prioritize placemaking on the Paradise side, which is allowing us to activate that side of the building for the pedestrians. And then you see in the plan here, the roof form looks kind of green and sort of like a park itself. That's because we're taking a very simple architectural expression. That roof is hiding all the mechanical that is often on top of these restaurants and are quite large and numerous machines, there's about six for different requirements. We want to hide that and screen it, and then use that surface, which is a passively ventilated attic, mechanical attic, over the restaurant portion of the building to get renewable energy from the south and west sides of the building, which is the most efficient and the longest-lasting sun, which PG&E would like to capture, and using the other side for vegetated roofs towards and into the garden dining areas. So I was going to start by looking at that in section, just to explain the way that's working out. What we have here is the existing site section across, looking at Paradise on the left-hand side of the slide, all the way to 101 on the right. The green is the easement for PG&E, which is an undeveloped area, and that's where we're going to put the queuing lane, as Zoe described. This is the existing building in pink of Denny's that you see on the site, and the black dotted line is the representation of the enclosure in section of the building envelope. So you go into the first setback, and you're allowed to go up 15 feet, and then another 50 feet back, you're allowed to go 35 feet high. And then, as you were asking about, each of those lower setbacks have a 10-foot allowance for areas above that, which cannot exceed 10% of the building area in, or developed in that zone. And that's allowed us to explore what would, might look like, how we might find that area if we wanted to use it, but really in developing the building, as we'll explain, and in some sort of the reaction and feedback that we've had within Corder Madera, and internal discussions from the time that we submitted this plan, we're not actually at this stage going forward with anything that's up in that zone, but we have diagrammed it for you, and it's just shown. But the element, that's sort of the landmark element, has, is no longer part of the project as, as we're continuing it on, we don't need it. The lower part of this slide shows the FEMA floodplain, which is 10 feet, and added to that is the one foot that the town of Corder Madera has added to that floodplain as for insurance requirement. So we're at 11 feet above sea level, and that's represented as how much that would represent on the existing Denny's. Existing is?
Existing buildings at 11.
At five, yes, it's at five feet, but the floodplain is at 11. Then, as you move on to this slide, we're seeing now the upper section, there's a key plan of where this section is taken. You can see the building volume, very simple, a large gabled roof, a very simple, again, a humble sort of architectural expression, that's enabling us to unify the whole building under that one roof, pushing that taller volume back into the setback where it belongs, and allowing us to use a staged, scaled, smaller shade structure, and unbuilt, in fact, the 15-foot set, the 15-foot area, in order to prioritize the pedestrian dining experience completely against Paradise Drive and not build in that zone. And the floodplain below shows that relationship. The vertical element is that 45-foot mark, which we have no longer, we've sort of abandoned as the project now. If we take that section a little further back, what happens because of the pinching of the site, the, as it lozenges down to points, which is sort of an unusual thing to do, those setbacks continue and push inwards, and they begin to form a place where our lower eve of the building, although it is still diagonally, would be lower than the 15-foot setback, peaks into that zone, is similar to what Denny's does here, the existing Denny's peaks into that zone. We've, which I wanted to show you to be really clear that that is one of the aspects of the site pushing against our building. And in the lower section, you can see that we've raised the building up one foot in order to catch up with the floodplain, so we're at six feet. And that's about as tall as we can bring the building up, just because in order, on such a thin site, we couldn't resolve the ADA problems of getting up any higher than that, it gets very difficult. And we do want to bring the pedestrians directly off the street, as we have. So when I'm looking at that plan, I'm just going to bring you through an example of how you approach the site. We looked at those view planes earlier with Zoe's discussion of the site, so I'm going to take you through these three blue views, starting with 101, and then along Paradise Drive. I'm going to go through a sequence of images, and as we go through the images, we're going to come up to the site, you'll see Denny's fade away, and our new building in the new position appear within this context of the slide. And so as we travel along 101, we're coming along, Denny's is appearing on our right here, and then I'm fading in the white model of just what the sort of massing looks like as we bring in the building. Again, a very simple architectural expression, the big roof over which has the photovoltaics, we're seeing the green roof peeking in from the other side. The gabled roof is very long and extends quite heavily over the building, creating a lot of shadow and deep eaves, also protecting the service side from rain and deliveries. A lot of renewable energy is being gained from that roof, as we spoke about. And then coming from the Paradise side now, we've come off the freeway, we're coming back, going southbound on Paradise Drive, we're approaching Denny's. And as we get to the place where we start to see it, we're going to fade it away, and now we have a very simp, very sort of strong entry presence, the idea that the building presents a very obvious entry, also a lot of glass and transparency at this moment between the parking and the pedestrian side of the building, through the building, the roof is perforated as well, and then we have a lot of connection to that dining area out. So there's a lot of glass on the side of the building. And then that scale transition that you see, where the building slopes down as low as we can get, and then under that, there's that other transitional scale from the building bulk and mass through that transparency and into that shade structure, which is a pergola, which then towards the back, it becomes the garden seating dining. From the other end of Paradise Drive, now we're going south, northbound, along what is the Frontage Road, as it touches the freeway, and then breaks away from the freeway, creating the island in which our site is, we see Denny's, and then we begin to fade Denny's, and our white model comes in, and we see the volume of the building forming. And here we have an integrated service area, a lot of vegetation to screen this side of the building in some ways, but also the building has a very simple vernacular form on this side, there's the trash enclosure to the left, and the materials that we're looking at right now are still really in formation, we just wanted to give you a picture of where we are. It's very early, and I'm looking forward to comments and hearing more about your areas of interest. And you can see here that that planting is quite extensive, especially taking advantage of the existing trees that we're trying to save, will be a real habitat potential as well. Overall, looking from the top, this is a view of sort of the, the larger, the building itself, an axonometric, and you can see very clearly, so the entrance side of the building, the roof, the way it steps down becomes a pergola open structure for shade and protection from rain, and then the garden that surrounds it, and vegetated features, and all of the sustainable features that we're trying to integrate into the building, including bicycle parking, photovoltaic, and renewable energy that will charge the cars in the parking lot, and as well permeable paving on the queue lane and other places, and we're exploring reclaiming materials and other things that are sort of consistent with that vision of Amy's as a company, and making those connections. So I invite you to come and see the model that we have provided. We have two models, one is the existing Denny, which is the smaller model, and the larger model shows this new proposal and massing in the context of the site as we've described it. Thank you, and I guess we're looking forward to questions and comments.
Oh, thank you. It's a very good, clear presentation. I don't know which of you will do best to answer our questions that we might have. I want to keep it short from the Commissioners, so that we get the public comment quickly here. With that in mind, I'm just going to throw it out that the biggest consideration is drive-through and why, and, you know, how do you justify it and so forth? That's going to be a very big issue. So it's, would have to be a specific entitlement to the property that we'd have to approve. So, you know, we're going to end up asking for parking, traffic studies, and why the drive-through, what's your customer count, all that kind of stuff is going to be very important to us, but justification for the drive-through is clearly a big issue. I don't know if you guys heard that or know that, but it will be. So, a little bird spoke to you, maybe. But that said, quickly, Mr. Lee, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Are you, so in line with Amy's kind of idea for these new restaurants, are you going to be pursuing LEED while building, any net zero, and for sustainability, are you actually going to somehow document, or is it that it's just a collection of sustainable measures in the building?
At this time, we're just trying to be as, as the collection of sustainable features. There's no plan right now to apply for a LEED certification, but we intend to exceed or meet some, most of the certification requirements without actually going for certification for a commercial building. In fact, at the moment, California legislation pretty much legislate silver, flat out with energy and water, and we expect to far exceed silver. So although I don't have any plans at the moment to search for certification, we do exceed, we plan to do a very good job of those things.
Thank you. Jennifer?
This may be a question for Paul, that I am curious with your Roanoke Park location, what percentage of folks come through the drive-through versus sit down? So that may be something you could answer now.
It does change a little bit with the weather and school patterns, but I would say, kind of generally speaking, it's about 45% drive-through and 55% people dining in today. Again, a little different depending on the time of the day.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Bundy?
I wondered if you had designed other buildings to be dry floodproofed, and just briefly, how is this one going to be dry floodproofed, and how will it be activated if there was a flooding event?
Personally, I have not designed myself a building that has been dry floodproofed. We do have consultant, a waterproofing consultant, that has specifically been involved in that. Our plan for this building is to integrate those floodproofing measures directly into the skin of the building and have in place the required measures and protocols in the management structure of the building in order so that everyone, that can be done in a timely manner, and all those things are stored on-site as they have to be for that to occur. It would be a panelized system, integrated to the skin of the building, that's what we're talking about right now, that would be drop-in and watertight, to far exceed the four inches an hour requirements that are required by FEMA. So that's, that's our measure right now to do that. And then we have been working, it's very early, but in the discussions that we've had with the, the ownership, that's really important, that this is a preserved building. And one of the larger things that has been of concern and will be is the foundation design, because where we have bay mud and other things in the soils here, the, the fact of the flood is actually going to produce quite a strong uplift on the building. And so we have already in place structural engineers that will be helping us do that, and we just started our soil analysis for those same purposes, of what we have in terms of tensile strength in the building.
Phyllis?
Okay, you mentioned the percentage of the customer breakdown. I'm concerned about the numbers. I'd like to know the number of customers that would be seated in the building to eat, and the number of customers who would have outside seating.
Oh, you know all this.
The maximum capacity.
In terms of, in terms of seating itself, do you have these? Yeah, we do. Well, I think she's, you're talking about the design at the moment, or how the current operation is working on Roanoke Park?
Well, you're looking at, where you start out with a 3,700 square foot building, now you're saying it's a 4,025, and I'm asking what the capacity is.
For interior and exterior seating? Yes. You have those numbers, in fact.
So the current, and these are approximate numbers right now, because we're very early, is, we'll say on the interior, about 60, a dining room of 60 people?
Six-oh.
Mm-hmm. And exterior, the approximately 3,000 to 3,500 square foot space would seat about 100?
100 outside. Okay, and I just want to verify about the tower. You mentioned that you were not going to look at 45 feet. Are you eliminating the tower entirely?
At the moment, we, we are considering eliminating it entirely. It was an idea about an open wood structure that was transparent to wind and light, and potentially an armature for the roof if it did want to continue upwards, but it also is a, was a potential signage idea. We do have a great front on this building, and so at this moment, I guess the answer is yes, we are going to eliminate that feature at the moment.
We adhere that, and by the way, a freestanding sign on the freeway side has a height of 15 feet, and they can be seen, you could drive by the village and you'll see a very good use of a 15-foot sign.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it was more of a landmark feature that was a potential, we were just exploring how that 45, if it was needed, where would we put it? So right now, it's been sort of abandoned.
Peter, when did you want to discuss traffic?
Well, I think that...
I had a bunch of questions having to do with traffic.
That's fine, I think that, you know, the issue of, I don't know if you guys know anything about traffic studies right now at this time, but it's...
That's something after the public.
You know, we know that we're going to ask for that, they will, planning department will ask for that.
Yes.
And that said, do you have any information relative to what happens in Roanoke Park in terms of total customer count and all of that?
We do, yes, we have all that data and information, extremely.
Could we do that, let the public speak?
Yes.
Well, yeah, and we do know about the traffic, we have already started that count, actually, for comparisons.
Okay.
We understand that, yeah.
And as long as your flood consultant is not from Houston, we're okay. All right. So that said, I think that we'll go open this to this large assembly of the public to come up and speak to this, please. Again, the three-minute rule, and you see the timer.
So my name is Dr. Richard Vogel, I'm a psychologist, family therapist, and this will be an immense contribution to our community, nothing less than that. We have, and I see in my practice, an epidemic of drug addiction amongst adolescents, and where adolescents, adolescents are in their psychology and children, is to actually need something, if you will, that's more hip than what they're doing right now. The community is endangered with regard to these dynamics. I refer in my treatment plan to Amy's Kitchen. Now, that's a radical move in this epic, but it's what's, that's right, that's right, that's what I do. And I'll tell you something, we wouldn't be handing wine to the community to influence, it'd be carrot juice. So, the point being that it's not McMansion, it's not McDonald's. We're talking about the eco-psychology, both what's happening in the parking, but also what's happening in the families at this point with our children. I have three. About a month ago, there was a controversy about mac and cheese made by the commercial companies. This wouldn't happen with Amy's, because they're not going to have the impurities in their foods. It's going to be healthy, organic, consistent. That's why I do actually refer, including, when I was in graduate school, my dissertation chairman had me understand that we need the highest stimulus value to counter a negative habit like addiction. The highest stimulus value that people can be excited about is the scheme, the color scheme, there's something called the U-rac ratio, the amount of nutrient, vitamin... There's something called the U-rac ratio, the amount of nutrient vitamins in fruits and vegetables. You walk into their place and that's what you have. And our children will be influenced. This will make an immense contribution to the, more than we could know. We could talk about, all about the structures of the buildings and this and that, but with regard to what it would mean in the community to have access to an environment like this, and one can see it in going up to Roanoke Park, it'll be an immense contribution. I support it from the point of view of an eco-psychologist, if you will, and a clinician. Just that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jim Robinson, Ash Avenue, Corder Madera. I generally support the project. I think anything we can do to improve the site that Denny's once occupied would be an improvement. I'm not as familiar with the site or the project I'd like to be, but one suggestion I would have is that we would have an adequate berm that would berm the drive-through from the freeway. I'm more concerned about that view than I am from this other side of the site. This is the entrance to our community. I'd rather say that you get off at Amy's rather than get off at Denny's. It adds a little more panache to our town. But the other question I was raising as I was thinking about this, if there's a lot of drive-through, and as some of our seniors are known to do in Corder Madera drive with their brights on, if that full line of cars with their brights on or lights on, you're coming southbound in the direction of the oncoming traffic's going northbound on 101. As you stand on the parking lot, I remember having been an occasional visitor to Denny's, if you're standing in the parking lot there, you're almost in line of sight with the freeway there. And of course, we know noise travels line of sight, and that's why I think that they probably have juxtapos, their building to allow that open space to be on the other side of the building because there needs the protection from the sound. But that would be my primary concern, birmingham and the light issue conflicts with the freeway. I know that drive-through has been an issue in this town. It's been an issue in Mill Valley and Strawberry Village, and I know that they objected to having a drive-through at In-N-Out, and then the county a year later approved a huge office building on the hill above the In-N-Out, which probably generates more traffic during peak time than In-N-Out does. So I would hope that we temper our ideas because I think that of all the sites that I know of in Corder Madera, there's probably very few that accommodate a drive-through anyway. And this might be one if it's properly designed and reviewed and approved by our planning commission staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize that I won't stay for the conclusion. My children were up very, very early this morning.
Say your name, please.
My name is Julia Nguyen. I'm a Mill Valley resident, and my kids go to the Practical Martial Arts Studio, which is like just adjacent to this, basically, by the canine doggy daycare. So I just want to say, as a Mill Valley resident that's seen the Super Duper Burger drive-through and having really not seen that be a negative impact on the community, I would really love a healthier option for my kids. There is about a million times where I couldn't take them out of their car seats to go into a different location. So if there was a properly designed place where it wouldn't be a traffic impediment, which I think this location is, it seems like a really great benefit to the community. Honestly, right now, going by it, as I did earlier, taking my kids to karate, it's quite sad to see, and I just think that this is a really great family company that would inspire a lot more families to get together and eat something healthy. [beep]. Oh, is that me? Maybe not.
No, I'm sorry. You know, but we'll give you a little more time.
All I wanted to say also is I'm a cyclist and I very frequently go around the Paradise Loop, so I am very familiar with actual traffic concerns, possibly dying by being hit by a car. And this location, when I am driving around from doing karate, seems like an ideal space for a drive-through because there's a lot of traffic in the shopping center areas, and then this kind of goes through and then loops back to, I think it's Tumal Pius, I'm not sure, or maybe it is Paradise, and then a very easy entry back onto the freeway. So just mom in support.
Thank you very much.
Greetings. I'm Michael Briggs, and I gave Amy's Kitchen an idea about this when I worked at Mandrake Books about 15, 20 years ago. And I sent it via email, and I don't think they recognized that I was one of the, maybe many people that gave me the idea. But nevertheless, I'd rather see them come to Mill Valley and, or KFC, the dilapidated KFC used to be. And basically, I'd rather see them not be a drive-in in Corder Madera because it attributes to tons of trash and litter and repus, and we have too much of that as it is in Marin. We never used to have any of that, and now it's everywhere. It's rampant, there's styrofoam and garbage everywhere, water being trapped in bottles. I mean, endless, it's just out of control. So I'd rather see them just be a regular family restaurant and not open the drive-through. If you're going to do a drive-through, come to Mill Valley and catch all the kids that come from Tam High, in route to Whole Foods, and In-N-Out Burger, or whatever it is over there, that burger place. I don't go there because I only eat organics since '79, but I would ideally like to see them come to Mill Valley instead of Corder Madera. If they're going to stay in Corder Madera, don't open a drive-in, just have a regular restaurant and have a brick kiln oven, Amy's, and use regular utensils and not anything that's going to be ending up as litter all over the freeways.
Thank you.
Hi, Phyllis Galanas, Prince Royal Drive, Corder Madera. One thing I'm going to do is echo what the gentleman before me just said. My concern about a drive-through is the trash. And then they're showing the prevailing winds. Corder Madera gets a lot of wind. And I used to do a lot of jogging in Corder Madera, and I would often just take a bag with me and pick up the wrappers from when we had McDonald's here, for instance, and other places where people would eat fast food, it would end up on our jogging path. So I have an issue with that, too. I'd like to see them open a restaurant, but one where people sit inside. I'm glad to hear that they don't want to do that 45-foot tower. Nordstrom's is 46 feet high, so you put that in perspective, that is a very high object. I would also like to see them not design a barn. We're a suburban community, not rural, and I like the openness they're trying to create, but I really hope they can do something that doesn't look like a barn.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Colin Woodall. I live up on 400 Summit. I'm actually one of the people who contacted Amy's about a year ago suggesting this site. So I was more than thrilled to find out that they are actually pursuing this. Speaking, I'm a registered nurse, speaking-
Sorry.
Sorry. Speaking from my husband who has an autoimmune disease, we are absolutely eating organic and fresh and really trying to change our diet. And half of my cabinet right now is full of Amy's. And so I definitely recommend their product, and I would think that this is a unique benefit to the community and for the people who want to change their diet and try to eat healthy and eat organic, and I entirely support this. I've been reading some comments on Nextdoor, and there's a lot of community talk about the environment and the problem with a drive-through with idling cars, being that it's right next to 101 and considering that 101 is a parking lot from the hours of 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, I really don't see how 19 cars are going to make the environment worse than what 101 is currently doing. So again, I entirely support a drive-through. I think it would be a great benefit to people who are in a hurry and can't get out of their cars, and I hope that we can welcome you to our community.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Margaret Bandell on that side of the freeway, and I think it's a great, it would be a great addition to the community. Something that hasn't been mentioned, but my sons used to not hang out, but it was the place, Denny's, they used to sit at Denny's in the evening and just get together because there aren't that many places open in Corder Madera that are reasonably priced for kids to sit at. And I think that if, Amy, I don't know what the hours would be, but it's a nice place for kids to be where they can afford the food that's being offered, and Corder Madera really doesn't have very much of that. It is a windy location, and I've sat at enough Little League baseball games to know, so I think the outdoor part needs to be carefully considered. But I, my only question is, how fast can you come?
Thank you, Margaret.
Good evening, everybody. Jane Levinson, poor Tamal Vista. My question, I just have one question. When is a ban not a ban? What do you do when you, when you lift the ban for this project and the next person comes along? And that's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Hi, my name is Utkash, and I live on Pixley. I was one of the Nextdoor guys, I think, who maybe started that thread. By the way, I really wholeheartedly welcome Amy's as well, you know, it's a, I think it's going to be a great addition to the community. They really do a good job with their food, and it's cheap as well. It's like, it's amazing. I mean, you can't just beat that, cheap, very easy. To the point that there is no good shopping in Petaluma. I think there are some good shopping places in Petaluma. But, I mean, it's, it's just like, you know, if you go looking through the trash, sometimes you do find interesting things. Sorry for sounding like a homeless guy. But, but I guess the allure of Corder Madera is that we have some quality things out there, like even though those two malls sometimes may be an ISO, you know, they contribute to pollution in a way, directly or indirectly, we have some good stores here. There's some good quality out here, basically. And there is this ordinance against drive-throughs. We'll probably come to it later, but, you know, I heard like another thing, rather noticed from the menu, I was looking at Amy's menu, pretty much every item on the menu is preceded by organic. I like the fact that, you know, there is a great onus being put on health here, and I also like, you know, how we as a community, at least like people, you know, most of us in this room and even the larger neighborhood endorse the idea of being healthy and making healthy choices. But do you think that health is a fashion trend or is it a lifestyle? How can we make peace with the fact that there will be organic food served with fumes coming out of those idling cars right next to it, and there will be people sitting outside taking in those fumes? And to the point that, you know, 101 is a parking lot. If a house is dirty, do you clean it up or do you just put more trash on it? Like, what should be the thought process? So I, I do think that the drive-through aspect is probably, you know, hurting the idea of, or it's rather going against the whole philosophy here of having a healthy option like Amy's in town. But, you know, aside from just that aspect, I do feel that Amy's will be a good addition as a restaurant, as, you know, he said. And I think we will be really happy to have you here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rich Perlstein at Nine Vista Court. I have a few perspectives to offer. The first is that, so I was a planning commissioner 20 years ago, and I was sitting up there, and Denny's came through with a renovation proposal for, I think they called it a modern diner concept. And I don't remember the particulars, but I know that, that we didn't pass it. And I've been blaming myself in part ever since, and when Denny's went out several years ago and it became an ISO, I was thinking, gee, that's really too bad. So what I'd like to suggest, I'm a rank amateur fly fisherman, and this isn't like fishing, but I think that there's, there's a dance that wants to happen between the town and Amy's. This would be a great project and a great use, and a great asset for the town. So I think that what I hope is the town considers that we want this, how do we help it to happen? And are there, I don't want to call them concessions, but maybe it's concessions, when it comes to drive-throughs, that's been in the ordinance, I guess, for some decades. But it's also true that times change. I think that the cars of the 70s idled a lot and stunk like crazy. My hybrid has a power-down feature, as do all hybrids, certainly electrics, and the power-down feature is even showing up in gas cars. So best case, this maybe opens two years from now. I think the cars that sit in, in the queue two years from now are very different than the cars that were in production when the ordinance was first passed. And the last thing I'll say is that I had one meal up at Amy's several months ago with a friend. He led me into it. It was great. Anybody that hasn't gone up, so that you can get an idea of the site, guys, I think you should go visit, have a meal, and then you'll maybe understand. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say one more thing.
You've had your moment, sir. No, sorry. Thank you. Who else would like to make a comment? Please, stand up. Okay. So we will close this public contribution portion and ask the applicant to respond to some of that public comment. I think we heard primarily about the drive-through aspect of that, and that was my comment. You guys are going to need to stand behind that and give some rationale to it, and some numbers, I think, would be helpful to know what we're talking about here in your current experience. Describe it and justify it and tell us why it's a good idea.
Thank you. I'm Diane Henderson. I'm a land use planner working with Amy's. And I just want to address the drive-through portion, and then the architects can respond to some of the other questions that came up. Several times we've heard tonight, oh, we'd love to have it, but not the drive-through, or why do you need the drive-through? Amy's Drive-Thru is the product.
Excuse me.
It, it's not Amy's Restaurant, and we do some sit-down, and we, and some of ours have drive-through. As, as you heard Rachel say when she spoke, when they first started Amy's, they started it out of a need to provide healthy, accessible food that was easy, that people could get their hands on. I don't know if you followed that she was pregnant with their daughter, Amy. This was 30 years ago, and they just didn't have access, you know, she wasn't feeling up to cooking and, and they were running out of options for getting healthy meals on the table. And that's how Amy's was born. It started with a vegetable pot pie that they made and marketed, and it's grown to this. But as Rachel also told you, she's heard for many, many years now from, from many people, you know, oh, you know, you should do a drive-through. We have small children, we don't want to have to get them out of the car, or children that just aren't in age where you really can take them to a sit-down restaurant, but we still want healthy food. We don't want to be at a junk food place just grabbing whatever to eat. So the only product that, they've been in the business of Amy's Frozen Foods for many years now, for 30 years, but when they started the Amy's Drive-Thru, that's what they started, Amy's Drive-Thru. And they have the Roanoke Park store, and this would be the second location. So they don't have a model, they don't build restaurants, they build drive-through. So I hope that answers that question.
It begins to answer. Who has numbers about the customer count on a daily basis and so forth that you have up there?
Paul has every possible number imaginable. The one thing that Amy's is really, I mean, it's thrilling to work with them, actually, their data-driven on that side is amazing, and it also goes right back to their, the farmers and, you know, all the way back to their, all of what's coming in ingredients. So we can answer all of those numbers, and the traffic studies are being started now and are being done. And we have both projections, we have the data that's driven by the previous location, and then we're going to be able to compare that to the data that we're going to achieve on this site in relation to what's going to happen. And we have traffic engineered, we've already engaged Farr and Pierce to be doing those studies.
Okay.
Did you want to have him answer any, was there a question about the data in particular? Because I would pass it to Paul.
It would be great to hear from, just quickly, what we're talking about for numbers from Paul.
Sure. You know, I didn't bring specifics with me today because I wasn't sure we were quite at that stage, so we will certainly provide a lot more analytical backup. I can just give you some generalities if that would be helpful, just to understand the concept a little bit. It's, you know, like any restaurant, we have different day parts and there's different times of day. We do do breakfast, but breakfast tends to be a quite small, maybe 20 guests in an hour at the max, sort of peak time during breakfast. Sometimes a little bit more on Saturday, we kind of get a later brunch crowd on Saturday and Sundays. But it tends to be a small business, but since we do a lot of vegetable prep work and we're making all the other ingredients at that time, it made sense to kind of get a little bit of flow through the restaurant during that time of the day. Probably the absolute, like busiest- Probably the absolute, like busiest, we are so slammed, we don't even know what we're going to do, which has happened occasionally, you know, when there's events in town and we have other, whatever it may be, just a nice Saturday when everybody's coming, we may get as much as 150 guests in an hour and that would probably be around the peak of what our current model can support. And again, I might be off by a little small factor. I'm kind of doing this from memory rather than from my actual reports and we will provide you, you know, a lot more breakdown by day part, day of the week. What is kind of nice though is that, you know, we tend to be a lunch and dinner, so I do know for this site, you know, it wouldn't conflict necessarily with school times and when there may be other sort of traffic events happening, you know, we tend to get that 11:30 to say 2:00 PM lunch crowd and then, you know, there'll be a nice afternoon, smaller group, but, you know, typically maybe the restaurant's half full or a third full for that, you know, 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM and then we pick up again for dinner. Our hours in Ronert Park go till 10:00 PM. I don't think we have any interest to change that, but it's something we could talk about. Um, and again, kind of busy from 6:00 PM until probably 8:30 and then sort of slows down for the rest of the evening.
I have to drive by.
Right. Does that help?
It does help, yeah. Gives a, just a flavor of what it's like and what it runs through. So I'm going to go back to the commissioners and ask.
May I have some traffic questions, or, uh, you mentioned a traffic study that you were doing. Uh, there's some things that I would like to see. Obviously, we want to look at the flow of traffic, but also the safety. And the reason I'm bringing it up, if you could go back to your page up there, that's...[702.13][702.13](Music).
And, and maybe while we're...
Cause this is the traffic.
Circulation page?
Yeah, well, yes. Because it affects it tremendously. I drive that road all the time because I live there. I'll be driving while you're having this great hoard of dinnertime, by the way. It can be a dangerous street because people do not realize there is no way on the north side of Paradise to get to the freeway entrance to a cross. So what you find, and I'm there all the time, you know, there's the Vet, there's the paint store and all this, people drive down the street, get down there, see they can do, and actually make a U-turn in the middle of the street. It could be extremely dangerous. So my, I, my concept was, and I'm not even talking about separating now parking and drive-through, that's a different issue, I'll be right. On the side closer to Tamil Pious, the northern entrance of the property, I figured that would be, you take, you, you lost my page.
Well, isn't, isn't this that moment?
No, no, let me, if you go back to that page, I can just show you. That showed it exactly as I wanted it. Okay. You're too fast for me.
I'm getting there. All right.
Okay. I, I pictured driving in at the northern end, exiting, so that would be egress, ingress, egress at the southern end closer to Coke in a right turn only lane. Even people who want to go for, back far away down the street should not be doing it. There's just too much traffic. You've, the paint store is all, not only for people like me, but for contractors and stuff, a lot of the, the Vet is one of the favorites in the county, they're in and out all day. You want to keep, that's the safety of it. So it's the flow of the traffic, the amount of the traffic and have, but the safety of it, I think is very important, especially if we're talking about pedestrians, we're talking about children and, uh, those who are used to turning left are just going to go a little by the way. It's not like the street is that long. So I would like the traffic study to look at, as I say, the safety features, not only the flow.
If I can just clarify too, the, the town will actually engage the traffic consultant. We, the client, the applicant will have to pay for it, but...
Yes.
The town will engage that and will direct what's to be in the traffic study. We have met with David Bracken to go over what his concerns might be, but that will be hired out.
Well, it's something Adam and I have, yeah, discussed too.
Yeah.
We'd like to see that. Um, I, I think I'm not the only one. I would like to know if there was a traffic study done in Ronert Park and if so, if we could see it and if not, if you could give us some kind of a report about how traffic is affected because both of these places are near the freeway and if there's a big lineup of cars to get into the drive-through, which I will just say upfront, I am not a fan of the drive-through aspect of it. Uh, the traffic backing up during rush hour affecting people, the free, leaving the freeway or even blocking part of the freeway because, as a couple of people have said, the freeway is virtually a parking lot, starting from Corte Madera for about four hours each afternoon. So I think, I would like to see how traffic's been affected in Ronert Park as part of that. Um, let's see, traffic study, traffic circulation. I made notes and now I'm trying to read my own handwriting. Uh, you said you're going to get for us the number of customers on a daily basis. Okay, and I mentioned that traffic study and if I, even though we're discussing traffic, I may say one more thing. I would like to see the building look a little less barn. As a matter of fact, my first thought when I looked at the drawings was it looks like a, an Acapulco peach shack, almost, a large one, a very large one. I'd like something a little bit more sophisticated looking. And then I have one selfish question. Is the food that you sell frozen the same, do you have the same food that you're selling in the restaurant or is it different food?
I can answer that one, so.
Cause I like your frozen food, so.
Sure. Um, well, it's different. It's, it's similar and it's different. So a couple places of similarity, the same chef that developed most of the Amy's recipe worked with us and did develop most of the drive-through menu. So if you like the frozen products, you'll probably like the drive-through products. But the food is actually quite different than what we make in, in the frozen side. So certain things like, for example, a veggie patty, well, you know, we make that in our plant. That's hard to make in a restaurant every day, but the majority of what we do is kind of prepared from scratch in the restaurant. We do share a few suppliers, some of the same organic growers we use on both sides. So there are some connection points, but it really is a unique menu, a unique offering that you get in the restaurant. But it'll be, you know, if you like our products, I think you'll still like the restaurant.
Oh, I like that spinach wrap you do. I'll probably have it when I get home tonight.
Thanks.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Bundy? Yes? Do you have any questions for these folks?
Uh, yeah, I think Jim Robinson raised a comment about the lighting and it looks like the buffer, you've got buffering with landscaping in a wall, so that's going to resolve that part of it. Okay. Uh, and then, uh, Rich, uh, brought up the issue of idling and I think there is a perception on people's part, at least on Nextdoor, that, you know, drive-throughs create a lot of pollution and things like that. I think Rich is right that the cars, uh, the additional pollution in addition to what's on 101 is probably insignificant, but perhaps this would be an opportunity to do some mitigation such as, uh, all battery-powered landscaping equipment would, would be a thought to mitigate that. And I, I share Phyllis' concerns. I like the, uh, I like the, the barn look in, uh, and I drive around Sonoma and Napa and, you know, you've seen very wealthy people putting in barns that look like this at great expense. But I think probably for the, for this site, it should be a little more finished, maybe a little more craftsman style or something like that, but just a little more finished look. I think recycled wood on the inside would be, you know, a great addition to it and sustainable.
Are you thinking of something like Meadow Sweet Bakery or something like that? I mean Meadow Sweet, uh, dairy, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, something in that vein, right. A little more sophisticated.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, Jennifer?
Well, I'm excited in general about the concept. I think, um, this is a very challenging location, so I commend you for, um, being probably maybe the first of, maybe there have been other concepts that I haven't been aware of, but I think, um, honestly, I've lived in Corte Madera for two years and I didn't actually even know how to get to the Denny's site until two days ago when I decided to drive there. And I've ridden Paradise, I drive on Paradise or on, uh, San Clemente every single day. Um, so I don't think that this is, maybe Phyllis is right, but when I drove there, there was no one on that road, so, um, maybe it was just the hours that I went, but, so I, I, I don't know that traffic will be a huge concern on Paradise, but obviously that will come through the traffic study. Um, as a mom of three kids under the age of four, I would be so excited about a drive-through because getting three children out of a car to go anywhere is an absolute nightmare. Um, and I've gone many times now to the drive-through in Mill Valley, um, the super-duper because it is a drive-through and I don't have to get out of the car. Um, so, you know, I mean, I think, you know, you guys are better at the operations than I am, but I wonder if, you know, there are obviously people that, that want to go through the drive-through for the convenience factor, but maybe you can incent people to park and come in by, you know, maybe there's a 10%, 10% discount because they, you don't have to use an extra paper bag or whatever it is. Um, I'm sure you guys can come up with creative things to somehow incent people to come in instead of driving through if that's, um, important to people. But I, I think that, um, it's a great project idea, so I look forward to seeing it, um, like come back. And I like this, I like the design ideas.
Hey, so I want to approve this project. Uh, I've eaten at the restaurant, I think it would be great for the community. No, but, so we were asked, how can we help do that, right? So I think the drive-in in particular is a real sticking point for the community as far as whether we can approve that or not. So my question is, is to staff, is what are the other zones and where that has been approved in Marin County, right? Like, cause we have them to the, to the north in Santa Fel and we have them to the south, right? Is that the same, uh, you know, vehicle-specific commercial zoning and, and they were allowed so that there is a, a precedent set in that type of zoning?
Well, as you know, I think each jurisdiction sets their own rules and has their own specific zoning districts, but I think the question, and this is a good opportunity, if you have, want staff to come back with other information about other, um, zoning districts or other information that may be helpful, we can, we can, this is a time to also ask staff of other information that you would like us to bring back or have, you know, have the applicant work to, to provide and us verify, or however it works, but we can provide additional information. So that, if that's something you would like to see is how, you know, what are other drive-through facilities in other jurisdictions, are they, you know, when's the last ones that have been approved, et cetera, and those sort, that sort of background information? Do you think that's helpful? We can provide some of that?
I think it would be helpful to set a precedent for other local communities that have similar uses in that type of zoning. For me to, if, if we're being asked to, to make a conditional use that's, um, not currently permitted, I, I think, um, yeah, so I, I think that that, that's important.
Like understanding how other jurisdictions have handled this particular issue?
Yeah, like how did Mill Valley, cause I'm assuming that generally speaking, Mill Valley doesn't...
Right.
...allow for drive-throughs, but they made an exception. And I can't think of any others in Mill Valley.
So if that's the background, we can, we're happy to sort of look into that.
I think another important thing for the community that I've heard is I think that for specific concession, concession ears, right, that Kurt, that, that they would allow that type of use as a, but, you know, does that mean that if Amy's moves on, is it grandfathered in? Cause there was a Burger King in Sausalito that left and now it's a Starbucks. So the question is, is just because there's an Amy's now, does that mean that it'll always be there? And I think the community would like to see that it's, if it, if it is seen as a benefit to the community enough to make a concession like that, is it only specific to that and how would we do that?
Well, if that's a que, yeah, I think when you're looking at, at that sort of question, it becomes a little problematic to, we're basing things on land use, on a land use basis related to particular characteristics of a site, it becomes problematic, um, at least on our initial look at something like that to specifically restrict it to one particular user. It's really tied to the land and the characteristics of the land.
Right, so that's important to understand.
Absolutely. And those, and those are certain things, you know, um, happy to delve into that a little bit deeper if that's necessary, when we come back and...
Yeah.
Would it, would it be feasible? Cause I think that this is another issue that...
Just, sorry, just to, sorry to cut you off, Commissioner. Just to reiterate, I mean, there is, what, what we do have in our, in our, um, existing zoning ordinance, usually when you have a conditional use permit, um, that again goes and runs with the land. However, if that particular use essentially goes vacant or is, is not used for a period about six months, I think it says in our code, and this is really a state law provision that we've adopted in our code, then a, a new conditional use permit would need to be applied for that, for any sort of use that would come back in. And we would expect, it would be likely that any additional operator would require that same conditional use permit, but...
Okay, thank you. I have a few other questions. Um, with the traffic study, will that specifically address pollution? I know in a recent EIR I read, there was pollution addressed, but because the community has brought it up so much, is there a way for Amy's to kind of discuss and prove it out?
Well, I think this is a, I think we've heard that. I think it's something that I, you can provide, this is the type of exact, I think, type of feedback that if that's some piece of information you want to know about, now's the time to let Amy's know, staff know...
What's the vehicle for that?
Well, I think staff can provide that information. I think we would be, um, sort of working on, uh, getting any information that you would want. There's different ways of doing it. I mean, we can hire our own consultant to sort of, with arrangements through Amy's as, as we do with like environmental studies and so on and so forth. That's, that's how we handle those things. They, we contract those, those folks out, um, and, uh, at Amy's would be responsible for paying for some of those, that, that fee associated with that. Other times, they will provide their, bring their own information. We can, you can ask staff to verify it or look at it to confirm, um, that it was done, the methodology was done correctly and so on, or answered any questions that we may have. So there's different ways to do it. I don't know, I'm not going to sit here and tell you exactly which way that makes most sense at this point.
Okay, but it can or maybe will be done, because I think it's important for the, for to find findings that will affect the community, right?
If...
Hang on a sec, yeah, we'll get you back up there.
Yes, this is the time to say this is a piece of information it, that you would like to see and we'll figure out how to get you that information.
I think the community and therefore me making a decision for them would like to see some, that in some form addressed.
Okay.
So, and to sort of latch on to that for you guys is that you have queuing in Ronert Park right now and what is that queuing? You know, here you've got 19 spaces, you say. I observe McDonald's on Redwood Highway does not have 19 cars in it, although it stacks up. I don't know what the other burger place does, but that's what I would ask you guys to do is to check with Mill Valley Planning and see how they went through the determination of queuing and what they were told and what actually is happening, if there's any follow-up study to the one on Miller. Um, and the one on McDonald, Ed McDonald's was grandfathered, right? Because when they went to do the In-N-Out Burger, they wouldn't let them have it.
That's county.
But that's county, not Mill Valley.
Oh, that's county, right. That's right, okay.
But I think, I mean, what's great in, from a, one perspective is we have a, a restaurant in Ronert Park with the same sort of service and so that's, that's sort of a great example to use in, in the sense of demand and, and customers and so on. You can, but I understand what you're asking for context in terms of customer breakdown, it sounds like, between who's using the drive-throughs versus who's going into restaurants, um, relationship. Uh, and we had in our, I think Doug brought this up in his staff, in the, in the staff report about relationship of, um, parking to...
That was my question.
Uh, the rest, these restaurants that have drive-throughs and how those sort of ordinances work with respect to required parking and excess parking, whatever, what have you. Um, and also I think it sounds like you're some real, we have real world examples, why not sort of get the sense of how those have worked elsewhere?
Yeah, so, those guys know what they're doing when it comes to it and presuming then that they're going to do intersection analysis at San Clemente and Paradise and at, um, Tamil Pious as well and then...
Coke.
Throw in the, uh, the other project, you know, it's on the, on the books right now, so they have to include that...
Mm-hmm.
...in some sort of analysis. And then how many Prius drivers are there in Corte Madera?[1798.33][1798.33](Laughter).
(Laughter).
And Tesla.
So there was a couple other statements I just wanted to make. One, we just recently approved a project that had a feature tower at another entrance into the town, so if that, in just a fear of doing that, it has been seen as a beneficial thing to the community and can create a nice icon moment as an entry point. So I just wanted to say...
It was smaller.
It was smaller, but it still was a tower, and that towers are a precedent here in certain commercial developments. So I didn't, I didn't want you to feel as though you were discouraged from doing that. It can't, I wouldn't want it, I don't even know that from a signage standpoint that it could be a signage, yeah.
That's your perspective.
That's my perspective, but it's also, you know, something that we've proven out in the findings as something that is acceptable within the community, so, yeah, so...
Okay, can be, right. Phyllis?
Yeah, in Doug's report, it says the municipal code requires 55 parking spaces, one per 75 square feet, a floor area, and five additional parking spaces for employee, one space for employees, for a total of 60 required spaces. Now, when Zoe gave her report, she said there was 41 parking places, and then there were 19 that were drive-through, and I'm still trying to figure out, looking at each one of these pages, how you're going to park and have people driving through at the same time.
That's another study, but...
No, but it does say in their report that 19...
6.6 has the breakdown of the parking, but yes, how do you get people through?
How do you get them through?
That's part of the study, you know, that has to be sort of established.
Maybe I should clarify that. We're making account of 60 spaces based on the 41 plus the 19 as the total, sort of, they're not true parking spaces, that's the car capacity. The 41 are the parked cars, the 19 are the queued that have a one-way circulation, and the blue in this diagram is representing the 41 cars access in and out. So if we are truly talking about parked cars, per the square footage of the building, we're underparked, but there is no balance, there are no numbers in Corder Madera for drive-through, so we haven't, we haven't gotten any further at figuring out what the proper number on this site is, and I think it does tie to Roanoke Park's numbers, the traffic study, the, and the allowance of a drive-through.
Why do you have to be sure we're all working with the same figures, right? Because as I say, I do have concerns about the drive-through and, you know, how it will function here. The fact that our ordinance bans it, and it's like opening floodgates, and this, this is a restaurant we would really like to have, and the quality of food, that doesn't mean everybody that has a drive-through, you know, every business has a drive-through is one that we want. And once you make an exception and you give a variance to the ordinance, I guess it is, whatever the proper legal language is, and what happens, and as you say, it goes with the site itself, so for some reason Amy's leaves and another company comes in, this may not be a company, you know, another restaurant we want to have a drive-through. So I think one of the things I would like to ask, and I'm keeping an open mind, even though I say I am not partial to the drive-through, you have one restaurant that, one location that's a drive-through. It's not like you have a whole chain of drive-throughs, and asking you to do a location without a drive-through is asking you to go into a whole new business. You could have one drive-through up in Roanoke Park and one seated, place where you're seated here in Corder Madera. Is it something you're willing to consider if a drive-through just will not work? I mean, you're nodding no, but Jeff...
They don't build just restaurants, and this will be...
They only have one place.
Correct, but they have, they have others in the works that they're working on sites elsewhere now, but, but what their, what their product is, is a drive-through healthy restaurant. They, and I hear what you're saying, it's just not something that they do or they're interested in doing.
Well, I'll just say, In-N-Out, you've heard us mention, a couple of us mentioned In-N-Out Burgers, all of their, everything was for a drive-through. The county would not allow it in that location, which is right down in Strawberry Shopping Center. They put the restaurant in anyway. It's one of their most successful restaurants without having the drive-through.
And I understand that, they, they won't build, what they're looking to build is a drive-through restaurant, so if the town doesn't want it, they would just choose not to do anything at this location.
I have a, can I ask staff a question?
Yes.
Because I think it's in the vein of where Phyllis is going, which is that people are concerned about this being a slippery slope. But to your point, Adam, I think another thing that would be helpful is what other sites within Corder Madera could we even feasibly, you know, consider or think that a drive-through would ever want to go there? Because in my mind, there aren't many.
Well, but I think, I think what we're looking for would be interesting, and I think this was also in the staff report, would be, is this something that you would want to narrowly define as, you know, as to this zone, you know, to this, to the, is it appropriate in the entire town? Is it just in concerned zones? Is it, how narrow, how narrow is that something? And we can look into how to, how to work with what your sort of feedback is on that issue.
Do you have any...
Well, I'd like to...
For this business.
Do you have any purview into other applications that have come before the planning department related to this site specifically, or other concepts that have been considered for this site?
We do, yeah.
That might be helpful to understand a little bit more of the history as well, just because it is an unusual location, the ingress and egress is not easy to find, I don't think personally. And, you know, it's hard to envision, I mean, obviously Denny's closed because it must not have been a profitable business in that location, or else it would still be open. And I'm imagining that since nothing else is open there in the interim, that they've also found it to be maybe a...
Yeah, the one, I mean, we, in recent history, the other application we did have was for Sleep Train to occupy the existing building there.
Okay.
And that was withdrawn a year and a half ago, about maybe two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago.
Right.
And that was occupying the, so sort of a lower, you know, impact.
So I guess something that, in terms of what's feasible from Amy's, and I understand that this is, your business model is the drive-through, and maybe when you guys come back and you have more detailed numbers, something that would be helpful to understand also is, because I don't, I think a lot of people in the community, and we heard this a lot when the California Pizza Kitchen went out of business, is that people want affordable, family-friendly restaurants to go to. There's demand for that in Marin especially. And understanding a little bit more about your business and showing why not having the drive-through makes it financially infeasible for you to be located here, and probably infeasible for many types of restaurants. So if we all collectively, and I think that there, we've heard this through many folks in the community as well, is that people were very disappointed when CPK went out of business because that was an affordable, family-friendly restaurant. So if we all sort of decide we'd rather have a family-friendly restaurant here with a drive-through versus Sleep Train or something else, then like that is maybe an easier decision for people to make versus just focusing on the drive-through aspect. That's my two cents.
I think that that's a valid statement, you said that very well. I think that we would clearly not expand any drive-through permission beyond this C-3 Highway frontage property and this specific property. And almost to the point that I would ask the architect to consider, like they did at In-N-Out, or In-N-Out, that it could be returned to a non-drive-through application, you know? If it did lose, if they went out of business, you know, could there, could we just say, all right? It becomes a parking lot, it is no longer a drive-through location, because for that matter, if Amy's went out, I can't sell alcohol here, so, you know, there could be another drive-through business that could apply for it, but we wouldn't grant it if it went through that six-month period, we would then yank that conditional use permit, so.
Is that, okay.
Yeah, so that's where I would, I would ask, if we were going to consider it, that it would be limited to this, and I think if that were the case, I think we'd all agree that if we got to accepting it, it would be just to this. Is that a fair statement?
This site and this business.
Yeah, I'm for that. I think the reason I was asking about the other zoning, where it is applicable in other areas, is that if I can have kind of, you know, fact-based evidence of other communities acting like that, it's easier to defend the finding when we, you know, find in favor of something that's abnormal to the normal operation of the city. So that's why I was asking for those, but it is that it would be based on the zoning area and tied to that, because the specific wording for it is that it's car-based commercial. So the very nature of that zoning, right, there's some wording in it that encourages it, not discourages it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we get the sense of what your, the commission sort of position is on trying to narrowly define this, and let, if you, if you know my staff can look at regulations and the basis and for how that might actually work from a zoning code standpoint, that would be something that we would work on.
So there was something else outside of the drive-in aspect that I wanted to address in this informational session, is I really appreciated the forward nature of some of the deviations of the front of the building and how it'll actually impact into a design setback for the specific plan in that area. I think it was really good of you to do that, it shows that you're not trying to hide anything, you're trying to create a dialogue with the city and the commission, and I'd encourage you to continue to do that, because in that specific instance, once it was brought to my awareness, I then read the specific plan about how to address that, and it specifically says that if the continuity of the building in its simplistic form is really in an adverse way affected by that, that, you know, you can make a finding that you could approve it, and then I also, that was in response to tilt-up concrete buildings that have a two, you know, so in both those instances, I was able to, and that was just a, to me, a practice run, right? Because it's not actually a designed building yet, but that's exactly the kind of dialogue and setup that makes the planning commission's jobs easier to make the findings, so I commend you for that.
Okay, so, you know, I'm hoping that each of you guys read Attachment Four and Attachment Five, which is a zoning ordinance or the conditional use permit findings, and that if you read those outside of this drive-through and the information that we're asking for, you know, I think that we have to say that we'd be able to support this, or if you want to say something specific to each one of those things to the applicant, that we should do so. I personally don't find anything that, outside of this drive-through that needs proof in the traffic study and the other information that's going to come out of it, that I would not be able to make these findings as it is right now, you know? So I would ask each of you to sort of address that and quickly, specifically say something that you would like to ask for from them relative to those findings. Anybody over here? No?
I think that if the traffic study supports the drive-through, I would support the drive-through.
All right. Jennifer?
I agree, I think that we're just going to need to be able to support the drive-through component of it.
So...
Which will be proven out through some of these other...
Statistical studies will provide the basis for the decision.
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I've said my...
Okay, all right.
Peter, Peter, there is one thing I'd like staff to find out. Would you try to find out why this ban was put in originally? I think that might help us.
Yeah, no, we will do our best, and I think Doug has started doing that work, and it's sort of, it was, it looks like our initial look was that it was included with an overhaul of the ordinance in 94. Now, so you kind of have to go back to the previous ordinance, see how it changed between 78 and 94, and try to, if there isn't anything specific in staff reports written in terms of the intent, try to infer a little bit about what was going on at that time, and we will talk to others in the community who may have been around and have their thoughts and ideas about it.
We all know who that was and that it was 1979, right, okay. So you guys have done a great job of prepping this, I think you have the general support of the commission for this without question, but, you know, the application gets developed, there's a lot more data that's going to come out of it. I would ask that, I've heard from the commission members that some architectural attention to create some interest in that building, I mean, that's part of it, but I think it's great that you've hidden the mechanical and you've done all, you've thought this through so well, I think, from a sighting aspect, and you've done a great study for the site. I commend you for the work you've done to date, I think it's a sound basis for this. I hear that the community really wants this, and yet you have to justify the drive-through aspect of it, and the traffic study will either give us a good foundation or something to argue about. And I don't know what that is, yeah, so, and maybe the traffic study will then point you to some different solutions. It could be that something comes out of that that provides for a better operation, and Mr. Bracken has a history of traffic problems, as does Adam and a few other people around you, so, it sounds like you're in good dialogue with the town, and I hear that, I see that, and I think that we all feel it's really beneficial. So, you know, let's put the pedal to the metal and see where we can get with this thing, so, that's our feeling, I think, in general, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's 11:30, should we...
Can we just adjourn? I would like to adjourn.
Right. Second there. Meeting adjourned, thank you.